Okay, guys. It is eighteen hundred hours. Attention to detail. I'm gonna call this regular council meeting twenty twenty-five dash seventeen to order. The invocation will be given by Pastor Ken Delgado of the House Church. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Mike Hammer. Please rise. Pastor Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. The invocation today is based on June twenty-eighth seventeen eighty-seven from Benjamin Franklin in the James Madison's Note on the Federal Convention to which he said, "We shall be divided by our little, partial, local interests. Our projects will be confounded, and we ourselves shall become a reproach and a byword down to future ages. I therefore beg to leave, I beg leave to move, that henceforth prayers, imperations, imploring the assistance of heaven and to the blessing and its blessing on our deliberations be held in the assembly every morning before we proceed to business, and that one or more of the clergy of the city be requested to officiate that service." Father, we come to you in the power of the name of Jesus. I am reminded that when these delegates were actually convening on this fledgling country called the United States of America and potentially dividing the country for differences on how to equally represent the states and the people they're in, they stopped and inquired for wisdom from on high. And there birthed the two houses of Congress, the Senate and the House of Representatives. Today, Father, I equally cry out, we need wisdom to keep unity in this city. We need knowledge to make wise decisions. We need understanding so that our thoughts, steps, and actions are led not by our reasoning, but by your Holy Spirit. We need your wisdom so that this city indeed will become like a city set on a hill, a light for other cities to see how peace rules and thrives with truth and grace. Give us favor for light industrial businesses to come to this city. Empower us to complete infrastructure through your blessing and not on the backs of more taxes on your people. Fill this chamber with your presence. Let hearts be drawn through you, to you, through your Son, Jesus Christ. Let this city be known for the blessing of your hand on all that we do. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of liberty and justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoorah? You know, I'm always motivated when we all say the Pledge of Allegiance in unison. So thank you all for your participation in that. Mrs. Jones, roll call.
Mayor Medina.
President.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
President.
Councilman Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Hammer.
Present.
Councilman Landy.
Present.
Mr. Morton.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, announcements?
We have one vacancy on the Recreation Advisory Board, represents at-large position. Anyone wishing to serve on these boards can apply online at PalmBayFlorida.org or contact the City Clerk's Office at nine five two three four one four.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We're now on agenda revisions. Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I have four presentation for Claremont-Suhr Main Break has been added to item number two under Presentations. Also under Presentations to item number three, I believe that would make it, we have a video presentation from Congressman Mike Karadopoulos. Additionally, the placeholder for item number five under New Business has been updated accordingly from the July tenth Budget Workshop. And then the presentation on the Certification of Taxable Values and Proposed Millage Rates has been added under five as New Business. It was just a placeholder, that staff report is there additionally with two slides as part of that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, I believe our policy allows for two presentations. I make a motion that we allow the third presentation under under Council, or under Presentations.
So I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. I need a second.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, we added a third presentation. Agenda revisions, Ms. Smith. No agenda? Counsel, before I move on, Mrs. Jones?
Yes, sir. The item number four in a new business regarding the city boards, I have included additional documentation for councils review.
Thank you. Counsel, any other agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move public hearing number two before Presentations.
Public hearing number two before Presentations?
Yes, sir, for Giovanna Alonzo Cabrera.
Yeah, they did stay here quite a long lengthy meeting last time. Okay. So after Proclamations to...
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I had one, under public hearings, I'd like to make a motion to move number five before number four.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion to move number, item number five on the public hearings to prior to number four, so kind of switch them around. All in favor, oh, I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we're on Proclamations and Recognitions. So I'm gonna ask the owners of the Shaq Riverfront to come on up. Rob and Kathy, come on up. And then we're gonna have Travis join us too. And why don't we bring up your whole team? Come on. Those are all your customers? Okay. All right, so everybody come on up. That's awesome. These are your faithful, huh?
Yes.
Well, that, that, well, this, that's important because without your patronage, you wouldn't be successful. Come on up. All right, so the very first thing is, this is the Shaq, this is our Mayor's Business Spotlight Program for our quarter, whereas it is hereby recognized by the Mayor of the greatest city on the face of the earth, we call Palm Bay. Brevard County, Florida, whereas the Shaq Riverfront Restaurant and Outback Tiki Bar is recognized as the Mayor's Business Spotlight Program recipient for the third quarter of the year twenty twenty-five. And whereas the Shaq located at forty-eight forty-five Dixie Highway Northeast, where? On US One, has been established a business in the Palm Bay community since early nineteen, since the early nineteen fifty's. Now stop and think about that. The city of Palm Bay was incorporated nineteen sixty, so they existed before the city existed. And fortunately, the city annexed them in. Whereas the Shaq is a local female and veteran-owned restaurant featuring a new tiki bar and deck, fresh menu, scenic views, and fun for all. And whereas the Shaq has shown significant business growth since changing ownership in twenty nineteen by doubling sales, hiring additional staff, continuing to reinvest in the restaurant as they undergo renovations to offer and enhance waterfront dining experience. And whereas the Shaq is a servant to our community by their good corporate citizenship as they have partnered with organizations such as the American Legion to host many private events for fallen soldiers and cancer foundation programs. And whereas the Shaq maintains high ratings across various platforms such as Google, Facebook, Yelp, with many customers praising the scenery and delicious food. And whereas the Shaq is innovative in offering not only a meal, but an experience by hosting numerous events and live music throughout the week, expanding the footprint of the restaurant, complimentary valet parking, and bringing celebrity chef-level talent to truly make a foodie destination. Now therefore, I, Rob Medina, Mayor of the City of Palm Bay, by virtue of said authority of that office, hereby recognize the Shaq Riverfront Restaurant and Outback Tiki Bar in the City of Palm Bay for the third quarter, recipients of the third quarter of the Mayor's Business Spotlight this year of twenty twenty-five. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Palm Bay to be affixed this seventh day, seventeenth day of July twenty twenty-five. Congratulations, team. And I want to add, if you haven't been to the Shaq, I highly recommend that you visit them. Not only do they have outstanding child, they have such a great opportunity with the atmosphere and the ambiance, if you will. So without further ado, I'm gonna call up, is it Travis that's speaking, or are you Kathy? All right, come on up. Congratulations, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
This is a great honor, first of all. We're very, very happy somehow we got elected, I don't know how. But we want to thank, first of all, the City of Palm Bay, because they really had our back and pushed with us. Our customers, all of our guests, they're fantastic. The team, Team Shaq would not be able to serve you the way that you should and deserve to be served. We do have further vision, believe it or not, as much as my wife is trying to stop me from spending money, we, we would like to add, extend our deck twenty by a hundred feet to use to hopefully host wedding parties, wedding venues, corporate events. We really think it'll help bring people to Palm Bay, to the Shaq Restaurant. Don't take it the wrong way, I love Palm Bay, but I love the Shaq a little bit more because that's what pays the bills. But we're gonna do everything we can to hopefully get that through. So anybody in here that can help, come on down, I'll buy you a drink. Thank you very much. It's a great honor.
I'll go over all the events for those that don't know. Right now, we are having evening crab lakes Mondays, Tuesdays, we got karaoke, Wednesdays, we have ladies night, Dirty Big Oak. And Thursday, we have, we have some over Dirty Big Oak. Country night on Thursday nights and Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we do have live music, six thirty to ten thirty Friday, or six to ten on Thursdays, six thirty, ten thirty on Fridays. We usually host a solo acoustic on Saturdays from twelve thirty to four thirty, so it's got a good little tiki vibe. And you never know what we're gonna have on Saturday night, but a lot of times it's concert quality, you feel like you should be paying for it. And two thirty to six thirty on Sundays. Come on out and see us. Appreciate the support.
So just to clarify a little bit, they have invested countless dollars in this new Shaq Restaurant. But what's moreover important is not only are they investing in our community, they're employing additional staffers. And that is, that was the purpose of the Mayor's Business Spotlight, is to increase your sales so you can, you'll be able to employ and employ more families and have families prosper within our city. So thank you. Come on up. Congratulations, bro. Nice haircut, by the way. Okay, now we're celebrating Parks and Recreation Month, so the whole team, come on up. Come on up, team. It is Parks and Recreation Month, July twenty twenty-five. It is hereby proclaimed by the Mayor of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Palm Bay. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's disease. Whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking, trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, baseball, football. Whereas Parks and Recreation is the leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation program, programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental education, and educational are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity, prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a fundamental, is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas Parks and Recreation is essential to adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure ecological beauty and our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Palm Bay recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Rob Medina, Mayor of the City of Palm Bay, by virtue of the authority of said office, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Palm Bay and urge all our citizens to actively participate in parks. Get out of the house! And enjoy the activities and support programs that work toward creating a healthy community and improve the well-being of all our city as a whole. In witness thereof, I set my course, I set the seal of the city to be affixed this seventeenth day of July. Daniel, come on up and receive the proclamation.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Daniel, the Recreation Director, and I'm here with Greg Minor, Parks and Facilities Director. So July is Parks and Recreation Month. Just to go quick, I just want to recognize what we have, a lot of our recreation teams up here that's behind the scenes, and then our Parks and Facilities team as well, who's very vital for a lot of the daily maintenance, the field prep, event support, and they're very behind the scenes to keep everything up and running in the side of the parks and our facilities. I also want to recognize the, our instructors, they deliver the classes and the programs, our counselors at the camps, and they provide the positive experiences for everyone that participates in our programs. The volunteers that donate their time and energy that are here in the community and want to get back to our events and programs. And our community partners that offer sports leagues and enrichment programs, and our partners also that are offering other camps as well, they fill a lot of service gaps for us that we're unable to provide. And in closing, just want to go over, if you have, put these on your seats here, we got QR codes, you can sign up for our newsletter, and there's also a QR code there for our activity guide, which is gonna go out three times a year, so you'll be able to access what programs and what you guys could sign up for coming up and see when our events are coming. And then, we're gonna play a short video here, but I'll, even though we got Recreation and Parks and Facilities, I also like to give a big shout out to every department that's here, PD, Public Works, Fires, Utilities, Finance, Procurement, HR, everything that happens behind the scenes. And one of the biggest ones, especially for the video you're gonna see, our Independence Day celebration, every department has a role in that event, so we'll finish this off with that video.
That was a great Independence Day. I'll just share that with you. But listen, I wanted to add something, because I noticed that one of our employees, Eric Sherman, I'm gonna ask him to come up, because I want him to say a few words, because he's got something on his chest that really inspired and motivated me. Mr. Sherman, come on up here and share with the audience what did that tag on you?
So I was lucky enough to be selected with our new city manager for a program called Light Training that I'm involved in, and this was part of my homework, to wear this nape tag every day of the week until next Wednesday to honor the person that inspired me most in life, and that was my mom. That's where I get a lot of my leadership skills from.
So we are now on our public hearings, item number two? Madam Smith?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, vacated and abandoning a portion of the rear twenty-foot public utility and drainage easement located within Lot twenty-one, Block twenty-eighteen, Port Malabar Unit Forty-six, according to the flat thereof, as reported in Flat Book Twenty-two, Page sixty-two, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and legally described herein, providing for an effective date.
I'm gonna open up the public hearing, now it's Mr. Morton. You wanted to share anything?
Just let you know, staff had no adverse comments regarding the removal of this utility and drainage easement, they are here for questions, but they had no objections, neither did any of the easement users or potential partners, which include Forte Power and Light, ATT, and Spectrum. They additionally had no objections.
Thank you. Madam Cabrera? Would you like to add anything?
No, thank you very much for your time.
Okay. I need a motion.
Some...
Any other comments? As you were.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, step in. Go ahead and step aside for a second. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against this item? No, you don't have to go far. In case somebody does have something to say. Is there anyone in this audience that wishes to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm asking for a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, ma'am, you could build your pool. There you go. Okay, now, we are on presentations, and Mr. Morton? You're calling up?
We have Nancy Peloton, President and CEO of the Greater Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce, and here to give the semi-annual update, and I think she has some staff with her as well.
Thank you.
So I gave each of you a little packet, we have a number of things to go over, because I think this will be my last presentation to you as President and CEO of the Greater Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce, as I will be retiring at the end of this year. After 10 years of guiding the chamber, I'm happy to report we have come a very long way. When I walked in the door of the chamber on September 14th, 2015, we had $9,182.16 in the bank, and our net income was a negative $547.94. Over the years, we've raised our savings by over 5,018%, close to almost half a million dollars, and we have provided security for our chamber partners to know that they've invested wisely in a chamber that will continue to be there for them and helping them connect and grow their business through the good times and the bad. In May, this is in your packet, the Orlando Business Journal recognized our chamber as the fastest-growing chamber in central Florida with a year-over-year revenue growth of 66% increase. The second page behind that shows that our chamber also moved from number 19 on their list in 2022 to number 12. So these are the most recent reported numbers. It's kind of amazing to think the Greater Palm Bay Chamber is the fastest-growing chamber in central Florida. I know we're the second-largest city, but we're not the largest with the number of businesses that are in Palm Bay, so we're very excited to hear that. Our membership has grown from roughly 250 partners to just short of 600. We have added over the years new trustee levels, we've added media partners, we've tried a wide variety of programs, initiatives, and events over the 10 years, I know a lot of you have attended some of those. I can say that we are a very innovative chamber. We've grown from two employees to five and two contract employees, and we really have become trailblazers in space science, technology, AI, cybersecurity, manufacturing, and emerging technologies with our annual Space Coast Symposium and our monthly Space Coast Alliance for Tech and Innovation meetings, and we have those at Florida Tech's Vertex Facilities in Palm Bay. In your packet, you'll see a list of all the speakers that we've had at SCATTI since it started, it's on the front and the back. We've had companies like Microsoft, NASA, Lockheed Martin, ULA, Satcom, L3 Harris, Boeing, et cetera, the list goes on. Every month, it's been interesting and fascinating, it's one of my favorite things that we do. We've also introduced a new SCATTI membership, it's called the Investor Circle, that's also in your packet, and that's the brochure. And we are focusing on those businesses in a more concentrated way, as much as we, you know, are there for, no matter what size business or corporation, we're finding that some that are in that realm, the ribbon cuttings and that are not something that they are looking to participate in. So it is a more concentrated members, membership, and we're very excited about that. We're also excited to have the Office of Small Business Programs from NASA as speakers at our July SCATTI meeting, so another flyer, give you lots of flyers, another flyer is in there. And at that time, we're also going to celebrate, it's the 75th anniversary of the first rocket launch from Cape Canaveral. So I have the commemorative pin, it was called Bumper Eight, and it was actually launched on July 24th, so we'll have a little celebration at our SCATTI breakfast. I also gave you a business directory and community guide, you did get one of these in January, but I put another in the packet. It is not just a resource guide for the community, but for the tourists that stop into our chamber welcome center. We promote South Brevard and are working on updates to our website to enhance the listings of things to do throughout the entire county in support of the Space Coast Office of Tourism. As I mentioned, our biggest event of the year is coming up, it is the Space Coast Symposium and Expo, which will be held on August 22nd at the Radisson, at the Port, in the Convention Center, and the Pavilion, we're taking over both locations. The Expo and the Pavilion, it's free and open to the public, we are hoping that students will come to see all the robotics, Avtech will have a demonstration, we have the little robot Pepper and the robotic dog. They can also come for the fireside chat, we have Andy Allen, who is the CEO of Aerodyne Industries, he was a Top Gun, he's also an astronaut who's logged more than 900 hours in space, and so we'll have a nice chat with him. So we're hoping that, like I said, the public can come to the Pavilion side of it, and that is happening during our Space Happy Hour, which will be from 3:30 to 5:00. I'm also really excited to announce at the symposium, this is how I can retire, because we finally got SpaceX. It took me years of asking everybody I know, sending out emails over and over, getting no's, but not giving up. We have the VP of Launch, his name is Kiko Donchev, and I think this will be absolutely fascinating, I have not seen SpaceX speak anywhere, at least in our county, so if that's something you would like to hear from, I encourage you to become part of our symposium. We also have Rob Long, the CEO of Space Florida, and John Wenswee, the President of the International Space University, those are keynote speakers, but we have three panels, and we are covering companies that were launched here in Brevard with our moderator, Dr. Nicolo from Florida Tech. We have companies that manufacture here on the Space Coast, as you may know, we are the largest per capita manufacturer in the state of Florida for our, when are we, our, why is this not coming to me? Anyway, just for our county, sorry, our county is the largest manufacturer per capita for the state of Florida. Man, too much going on. And then finally, we have the state of space, I mean, you can't be the Space Coast and not talk about space. So we have United Launch Alliance, US Airbus, Defense, RG-NEX, Boeing, ViaSpace, so I think it'll be absolutely fascinating, you have a flyer there in your packet. Also is the Brevard Prosperity Initiative, so we are not just looking at space and all these companies, we are looking at our community. And the Florida Chamber of Commerce mapped the entire state of Florida by zip code for the 10 root causes of childhood poverty. Our chamber started with this about four years ago with the annual livestream, and then in 2023, we started the Brevard Prosperity Initiative, you have that flyer in your packet, and it has the stats, and you can see where we are headed. This was a concern for us, because the zip code 32905 is sadly a zip code of concern here in Palm Bay. And we brought together, we are the conduit to bring businesses together with nonprofits and community-minded individuals, we've had several success stories, and on August the 6th luncheon, we'll provide an update on how that's been going, how businesses can get involved in the community as a whole. Not only does the chamber collaborate to bring partners to Brevard County Prosperity Initiative, but we also help drive economic growth, the power of partnerships, so in your Everything Brevard magazine, I did flag that for you, is the article, How the Greater Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce Drives Community and Economic Growth, and this is going to be out for the whole year, and we also have an article, once again flagged, in the Space Coast Living Magazine promoting our symposium. It's really just a few examples of the marketing that we do, along with Brevard Business News, Spotlight Magazine, Savings Safari, we have billboard, social media, we're doing geofencing ads. Last year, we won the Membership Communications Marketing Materials Award for a chamber that's 500,000 to a million in budget for the entire state of Florida. Going further afield, we were the only chamber that participated in SpaceCom in Orlando along with the Florida Simulation Summit and the International Space Development Conference. Companies have been reaching out to us from all over the country, we appreciate the relationships that we have with the Growth and Development Department as a city, at the city, so we can share leads and prospects that are wanting information about Palm Bay. We continue to advocate for our community. I attended the Brevard County Days in Tallahassee, talking about our concerns for our whole county, also went up to Washington with the Economic Development Commission to advocate on behalf of having NASA's corporate office moving down here to Brevard County, and we spoke with the interim director of NASA, Janet Petro, and we met with several agencies to discuss Brevard County concerns. The chamber's mission is to serve, advocate, and promote as a trusted voice for our business community, and I believe we will continue to succeed and thrive at doing that mission. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Nancy, I have seen the growth from the day you walked through those doors, and so it has been exponential. You've done an outstanding job, you've put space and industry and commercial at the forefront of the chamber, you've had businesses prosper, you've influenced businesses, you've influenced your staff, you've inspired them, you've inspired a whole community. And for that, ma'am, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate all you've done to generate prosperity in our, in our community and increase our commercial base. And even moreover, now, I can safely say to you, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Does council have any other comments, Councilman Johnson?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, and I share the same regards, Nancy, I appreciate you, just more than you can even understand, like you're my Canadian aunt. You always just, always have a smile on, no matter what storm you're going through, you and your team come together and work things out. My only question I have, I was taking notes as you were speaking, I see July 29th, the Brevard Prosperity Initiative is having a meeting, you also mentioned August 6th.
Yeah, so August 6th is the update to, at the luncheon, that's where it gets out to more of the business community, so the one that's in July, we have monthly meetings on that. Usually it's the second Friday of the month, it's open to anybody to come, it's at Wings of Grace Church, and then they have a planning session, so yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second Friday.
Get involved.
Wings of Grace.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other?
I also want to echo a thank you, you've been absolutely amazing. I thought I did a lot of events, and every single one I go to, either you're there or your presence is there, I want to thank you and your whole team for everything you've done, and, you know, not just here, but everywhere that you go, especially when you leave Palm Bay, you're always bringing Palm Bay with you, thank you.
That's true, thank you.
Councilman Landen?
Yep.
Any comments? Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So now, I'm going to defer, this is presentation number two, Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. We have Gabriel Bowden, our Utilities Director here tonight, we still have a lot of work to do on the Turkey Creek Sewer Main Break over on Clermont, we still have a lot of communication with the community, the HOAs, residents in and around the area, but we do have a lot of information now, this many, few weeks on, and so we did want to come back to council and to the community and kind of present where we are at this point, what our follow-ups will be, what we know, and share some of the final data and cost estimates that we have, so thank you, Gabriel.
Great, thank you so much for the opportunity, there's a lot to cover, I'll try to be as brief as I can and respectful of your time. So our agenda, a few things I want to cover tonight, the incident overview, our response, the spill volume, as Mr. Matt had mentioned, water quality results, restoration efforts, communication and outreach that we've done, and some follow-up actions and some things that we're looking to do in the future, and then also do a few key staff acknowledgements. So first, Sunday night, June 8th, about 9:00 PM, a main, a forced main break was reported at 10:50 Clermont, utility staff arrived about 10:00 PM, started calling staff in, and by 10:30, we were beginning the recovery of spilled sewer at that point, and assessing the situation to begin making repairs. I do want to note that through this whole event, one of the things that we did early on, on Monday morning, was stand up the EOC, we've got some people that were involved in that, and I'll talk about that later, but I just want to point that out, on Monday morning, we stood up the EOC to kind of help with this entire emergency. So again, the crews were there about 11:00 o'clock, they started digging to get down to the main to see what was going on. We really thought we were going to be able to repair this on our own, slap a clamp or two on and move on. About 4:00 AM, the crew got down to the main, and it's at that point, they noticed that on this 20-inch main, there was a break at the bottom of the main that ran the entire length of the 20-foot stick of 20-inch main, large enough that you could put your fist through it. So at that point, they knew they, we needed to call in some contractors, and so we did that at 5:30 in the morning, we got, Cathcart was on site, and beginning to assess the situation and mobilize their folks, and by 9:00 PM that night, the bypass was activated and flows were, from this area were returning back to the plant. It's a lot of time, a lot more time than we would have liked to have seen pass. Line stops are not readily available, we found some in South Florida, they were on their way up, 95, as it does from time to time, had an accident, and they sat on the highway for quite some time. So we moved as quickly as we could to repair, and here's a picture of that repair as it was finally put in that night. So the spill amounts, approximate spill amount is 2.41 million gallons, we recovered approximately 1.25 million gallons, staff of the city recovered about 50,000 gallons, and then Cathcart and all of their subs recovered another 1.2 million gallons. So released into the environment was about 1.16 million gallons. Now we further alleviated the impact to the environment by deploying turbidity barriers, we deployed three turbidity barriers, we also removed soil from the storm ponds that were nearby, we removed 702 cubic yards, and then we also were skimming solids from the creek, about 56,000 gallons of Lake, Turkey Creek water was removed with a lot of solids at that time. So let's talk about water quality, we had a sampling plan, some locations we'll share with, and then what those results are. So we were sampling for fecal bacteria, we had six sample locations that we sampled from, and we determined those in coordination with the Department of Health. I also want to talk that this entire time, we were in close coordination with other agencies, we were in coordination with not only the Department of Health, but also FDEP, Florida State Watch, and then also developed some new friends with the Marine Research Council. So we had six sample locations, the area of the spill is in this area here, so we sampled at the spill, before the spill, and then three additional, four additional areas after the spill. Sample results indicate, you know, very high fecal counts, the background were also high, higher than you'd like to see, here's a graph form for that, so a few days after the break, we saw some improvements in the fecal counts, the spikes that you see going up there after a rain event, and generally rain events will flush a lot of debris and other matter that's on the roads into it, so that's why we see those spikes there on the far right, you see the background results here. In addition to the samples that we take, and we're done sampling now, the Marine Council, they sample all the time, and this is a result of one of the areas that they sample year-round. The red line is where our break occurred, and you can see an increase in the, and I'm going to butcher this, I apologize, the Enterococcus bacteria, that's what they sample for on a bimonthly basis. So you can see going back to the last year, there were a lot of times that were high, after the break it was high, and then the next three samples after the break, after we did our remediation, we saw a tremendous decrease in that. If you want to see all of their sample results, the website is there on the bottom of this PowerPoint, if you would like. So restoration efforts, again, we removed and replaced 12 inches of dirt in the ponds, we installed new grass in and around the ponds, 92 pallets, reinstalled the barriers Reinstalled the barriers, the fence around it. We do have some additional work to do on resurfacing a road on Citrus Avenue. We had a lot of hydraulic fluid that was spilled on the asphalt there, and will need to be removed as soon as, not as soon as we can, because it's not in bad shape. It just looks bad, but we don't want to delay too long. We'll prioritize that and get that done quickly. Here's some before and after, or during and after pictures. It's a very terrible event that took place. Where it took place was the best place for this event to take place. We had two storm ponds, one that you see right here, and then in the back corner, there's another. So a lot of the spill, we breached the wall, a lot of the spill was going in there, capturing a lot of solids, and then settling out and going into the environment from there. But we were able to capture a lot through there, settling, settling took place. So it really was the best location for this event to take place. Here's some during, on the west side of the Clermont Bridge, during the break, and then after, you can see that the, the quality of water had greatly improved at this point. Here's another example, and just got a little close-up here that you can see some nice game fish in there still, so that was good. So we've done a lot of public communication through this as well. Initial alert on the 9th, on Monday, contacted the Florida State Watch, did a reverse 911. Public signage was placed out for the public. We also did a lot of press releases through the days. We did community outreaches, some door-to-door, and a presentation and Q and A for residents. And all of this was supported by website banners and a public hotline. So some follow-up actions. Cost of repair and restoration, that's what everybody wants to know. So that was 1,124,000 and some change. The road restoration will be somewhere around $75,000. We'll be working with contractors that we have on contract to get that done. We also, during our presentation to the community, there was an indication of the public wanting to be involved in how we do water quality improvement projects. One of the things that we noticed here is the aeration that we did added some great clarity to the water, and maybe there's some projects we can do with aeration. There was also a number of folks that were mentioning dredging of Turkey Creek. A lot of investigation will need to be done into that, the value in that, that's in that, and how feasible that is. We also talked about investigating the failed pipe. This pipe was installed in 1988. The life expectancy is 100 years, so it's only about a third of its life expectancy. We had, we have about 1,000 feet of 20-inch main in the, in the same area that was installed that year. And again, we need to be looking at ways to use new technologies to do pipeline inspections. We also discussed increasing our inventory in the last year, I will tell you. We have been doing a lot of work to increase our inventory for lift stations, for emergency bypass, and we continue to do that. We also need to look and develop cooperative relationships so that we can have some of these larger items that people don't normally carry to be able to respond more quickly. And then also developing protocol calls for future events to ensure clear, timely, and inclusive communications. Want to acknowledge a few staff. We had a lot of people that were involved, people from Public Works, procurement, police, fire, city manager's office, utilities department, Cathcart Services was stellar. If I begin to start to name people, I'll miss some, but I do think there are a few that we should highlight to you for the great work that they've done. And, and those are, if you would, if you're in the room, please stand. Tommy Marinelli, our Assistant Director, he oversees the distribution and collections team.
Yeah, excuse me?
Yes.
As you call out their names, I'd like for them to come up front.
Okay. Very good, sir. Thank you, sir. So Tommy Marinelli has done a great job in developing a great culture with his team, can-do attitude. Tommy's wife was in the middle of labor and had difficulties, but he was still wanting to be engaged and to help, and we had to tell him, please, take care of your wife. But very dedicated and a huge blessing to have on the department. Derek Ackers, our wastewater collection superintendent, was out on-site for the better part of two days. Very dedicated. We tried to get him to leave, but I knew he wasn't going to. I wouldn't either if I was in his situation. Very dedicated, really oversaw all things very well, great attitude, made a call, made a decision early in that morning to reach out to a number of different contractors, reached Cathcart, engaged them, really took the empowerment that we've given him, and has just applied it and very proud of him.
Bayside High School graduate, 2004.
That's right.
Lifetime Palm Bayer.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Jacob Soto, who's not here tonight, but he's our Water Distribution Superintendent. He was there by Jacob's side, by, excuse me, Derek's side, the entire time, and just very helpful. We also had Sean Davis, our Compliance Division Manager. She did a fabulous job helping reach out to and talk with the HOA that was near there, talking to the state, talking with a number of our partners, and making sure that the samples were taken, that we had those. Just did a fantastic job in helping us stay compliant through this whole time. Even though she did a fantastic job, we'll still get a fine, but that's not, that's beyond her ability to make that happen. Again, we spent, we stood up the EOC on Monday morning, and Brandon McKee, if you'd still, if you'd come up, please. I was in Colorado, not here, I was at a conference, not on vacation, and I was dying the entire time because you want to be here during these events. That's where you belong. And Tommy's out on maternity leave, I'm not here. The other Assistant Director is in Colorado as well. And Brandon stepped in, did a fantastic job, making sure that the communication took place between the field and city management. I cannot thank Brandon enough for all of the work that he did. Very positive attitude, very great to communicate with, really a heart of gold in trying to make sure that, you know, he's not a water guy, he's a fire guy. But he handled the situation beautifully and did a fantastic job. And I'm sure he would tell you that without Alexandria's help, he would not have been able to do it as well as he did. And Alexandria, if you're here?
Yes, she's coming up.
She did a great job making sure that we're keeping all of our, our ducks in the line and helping with a lot of paperwork and those types of things, so a fantastic job. And then finally, Justin Williams, the Project Manager with Cathcart, he did a very fantastic job with all the coordination. I think he was there almost as much as Derek.
Another Bayside High School graduate of 2004.
Oh, yeah. Wow.
Just wanted to highlight.
The golden age.
Palm Bayers.
Yes, yes. So I want to thank these, these individuals for all of the hard work that they did, and really thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I want to take this opportunity to say, I witnessed this team. And, and you're right, it was Alexandra that coordinated those efforts as well. We had law enforcement, but Mr. Morton, your work, your tireless work along with this team, and I went on-site during this catastrophic event, and I, I have to tell you, I was so Palm Bay proud of each and every one of you. This was so catastrophic, you recognized how devastating this was for our precious resource of the Turkey Creek, and your tireless efforts, all those countless hours. You, we had to talk you to go to sleep, Derek, but I want to again, just share that with council, the dedicated employees that we have that truly care about not only this community, but our environment. So kudos to each and every one of you. Thank you for your hard work. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Morton, is there another presentation I believe you have?
Yes. Last presentation, we have a video Congressman Mike Herodopoulos took to the House floor, I believe it was yesterday, to recognize one of our own, and I'll let him tell the story.
The chair recognizes the gentleman from Florida, Mr. Herodopoulos, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today I recognize our Chief of Police in Palm Bay, Florida, Chief Mario Agello. Mr. Agello has been serving for 25 years in our community, and throughout his career, the chief has exemplified amazing dedication, leadership, and deep commitment to public safety. In addition to his service, he founded the Palm Bay Blue Foundation, a nonprofit that supports well-being of his department's employees and their families. So on behalf of a grateful community, I want to thank the chief for his outstanding service and the commitment to the people of Palm Bay.
Congratulations, chief. It's my interpretation of that, that, that will be on the congressional record and part of the history of this great nation for years to come. Congratulations. That was an extreme honor by our United States Congressman. So we are now on public comments. Deputy Mayor, Council, I want to address something that was said, and I know a lot was said, but when it comes to considering the public comment portion of having it broadcasted, as mostly you know, I didn't agree with that, but something was said that any one of us could bring it up. What, what I want to clarify is according to our council policies, the reconsideration, and this is 7.9.14, it's motion to reconsider. The reconsider, the reconsideration of issues previously act upon, previously acted upon is discouraged. If a council member decides to have an issue reconsidered that has been acted upon at a meeting within the past year, the council member must first approach council with a request to reconsider the item. A majority vote of the city council is required to schedule the item for subsequent meeting for reconsideration. So in other words, this motion that has been brought up time and time again in our public comments, has been brought up, and the only way it's going to change is if a majority of the council decides to reconsider that. I voted against that policy. So I'm bringing up, if council would want to bring this up for reconsideration, knowing that this motion passed three to two in the past, and I'm asking council, is there a majority that would request to bring this back for reconsideration? Kenny Johnson is waiting.
Yes, Mayor, I'll, I'll adhere to the request. And the way it plays out, I remember this happened a few years ago with Councilman Bailey. We went with majority weighed in regards to reconsideration. The reconsideration came before council, and then it was shot down after more information was brought forward. So I'll say it's flat out here right now, I'm in support of this, I'm in support of bringing back the cameras back on. I've heard what I needed to hear through, she's not here. Pastor Kendall got his wife, because I was praying up here while everybody was talking, and I heard what I needed to hear, so I'm good with moving forward. And just for the, set the record straight, I'll be approving it, or I'll be voting in support in the future, so that's all, Mayor.
Well, thank you then. I, I would need a mo, well, I've got a, I've got another council member that's weighing in. Councilman Hammer?
I would also be in support of bringing it back. I was before, and I would actually like to see some, some, some things to make a little better, and yeah, I'm, I'm behind that.
Okay, so, so gentlemen, I would need a motion according to our policy.
So moved.
I'm second. Got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Mayor Medina. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe?
Nay.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Hammer?
Aye.
Councilman Landvin?
Nay.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. So we've got a motion to reconsider, and I'm sure this will come back on our agenda. Right now, we are under consent. Council members, do you wish to pull any of the four items?
I'd like to make a motion to pull consent item number one.
Second.
Got a motion, well, what about two, three, and four? So is it to move two, three, and four? I need a motion for consent. We're pulling item number one, right? I need a motion for the other items.
I'll make a motion to pass the rest of the consent agenda.
I got a motion by Councilman Landvin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. Smith, anything you'd like to share?
No. No.
Okay. We're now on item number one on the public hearings. Madam Smith?
Ordinance 2025-22, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances Title V, Legislative, Chapter 52, Boards. Subchapter, General Liability Risk Management Program. By increasing the settlement authority of the Risk Management Committee, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parrot of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for inclusion in the City of Palm Bay Code of Ordinances, providing for severability clause, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Smith. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and ma'am, you present the case.
This is the final reading of the ordinance that increases the settlement authority of the Risk Management Committee, and also by the same amounts increases the authority for the risk manager, the city attorney, and the city manager, and also provides a new mechanism for the city manager upon consultation with the city attorney to be able to litigate cases involving nuisance violations.
Thank you, Madam Smith, and I have to commend Councilman Landvin for working hard with staff on this one. Thank you for having the foresight and understanding the economic increase that we've had over the years. So thanks for bringing that up, Councilman Landvin, outstanding job.
Thank you, Mayor.
At, at this time, I'm going to open up to the public. Anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Please by show of hands. Seeing none, I'm closing the public hand, asking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass it.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Landvin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, a four-zero. We are now on item number three. Madam Smith, on the public hearing.
Ordinance 2025-24, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances Title 17, Land Development Code, Chapter 172, Development Review Procedures, Subchapters, Part 2, General Procedures, and Part 6, Subdivision Application and Approval Process. By including provisions for administrative approval of preliminary and final plots pursuant to Florida statutes, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parrot of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for inclusion in the City of Palm Bay Code of Ordinances, providing for severability clause, providing for an effective date. And Mayor, I do want to note some modifications as far as this ordinance. The whereas clause modified to not-
The whereas clause modified to match the resolution that we previously passed, specifically provide whereas the Florida Legislature passed SB seven eighty-four during the twenty twenty-five legislative session, and whereas on June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Governor Ron DeSantis signed SB seventy-eight four, which became Chapter twenty twenty-five, one sixty-four, Laws of Florida. And whereas, Chapter twenty twenty-four, one sixty-four, Laws of Florida, amends Section one seventy-seven point zero seven one, Florida statutes, to require plots or replats to be administratively approved. Local governments to designate an administrative authority to receive, review, and process plot or replat submittals, and provide timeframe for decisions on plot or replat submittals. And Section one seventy-two point zero five two, subsection C, and Sections one seventy-two point zero five three, subsection D, should both date seven days. Thank you.
Seven days.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, Council? Okay, seeing none, um, anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? I saw Master Chief, did you raise your hand too, Doc? Come on up, Master Chief.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. I understand why you had to make this change. There's no doubt it came from the government above, who follow the rules of our governing bodies. That's how life is in a free society. But that does bring a couple of questions. Under consent agenda number one, which was a code of ordinance change, you brought it into public hearing, so it would have been presented to the public hearing, yet code of ordinance on number one didn't even get the chance for the public to address it. That's the first item, because it was procedural, muddied waters. But that leads us to what this is going to actually bring into effect of preliminary and final plat modifications, where the public won't be aware of what's happening in this instance. And why that, why is that important that the public won't know? Under con, on the agenda tonight, we're not going to discuss them because the developer pulled them. There was a three hundred and fifty-three acre plat modification that does affect the residents of Palm Bay. Guess what? They aren't going to know it with these modifications. So my request is to you, find some mechanism by which you can keep the citizens informed of what's happening to it. I just pulled out just one change, that's three hundred and fifty acres. It's a big one along Miko Road that's going to infect the other developments, other city down the street. People aren't going to be aware of it because of this simple modification. You as my leaders or representatives of the city, find, seek and find some mechanism to keep citizens informed. You know me, I'll be bending over backward, going to staff and saying, I want to see every report now that comes through. I want to get a copy of every building plot that comes through, because that's the type of person I am. And only so I could then re-address it in public, so that somehow letting the public know. That's why I do this. Not to be mean to you guys, but it's somehow we have to keep the citizens aware of what's happening in their city. Like I say, with the passing of this one, the developer for three hundred and fifty-three acres won't even have to come and face the public again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this item? Councilman Landervan.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, if it was, if it was a plat amendment, that doesn't, that's not a final plat then, so we would still see that, correct?
Ma- Ma-
No. The, what was pu-, uh, continued are the development plans. Development plans you continue to see in the, of course, the plots are going to be built upon the, uh, standards that you all set in the development plans. The development plans you continue to see, and those are just continued to the next, uh, meeting. I believe it's the next meeting, but another council meeting.
Does that answer your question, Councilman Landervan? Anyone else in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public here and asking for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Landervan. Any comments, gentlemen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. We are now on item number five. We switched, uh, uh, gender revisions, so we're now on item number five, preceding item number four on the public hearings. Madam Smith.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. An ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances Title V Legislative, Chapter fifty-one, Public Hearings, and Chapter fifty-nine, Quasi Judicial Proceedings, by removing provisions related to the preliminary and final plots pursuant to Florida statutes, providing for the repeal of ordinances or parrot of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for inclusion in City of Palm Bay Code of Ordinances, providing for severability clause, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and Mr. Morton?
I don't have anything on this item. It's a companion to the, uh, one you just read.
Thank you. Uh, Council, any questions? Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? Uh, I've got Master Chief and then Ruth Koffel.
Bill Batten, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. This relates specifically to what we just talked about, and no need to repeat myself with it. But if it would be at all possible, under your brainstorming mechanisms that you have up there, if anybody could even propose some kind of ideal mechanism where we could somehow inform the public. Otherwise, we, we, we're, we've lost it, right? In other words, how are you going to do it to keep us informed? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Koffel.
Ruth Koffel, nine thirty-five Douglas Street, Southeast. It's actually, I'm affected by this, courtesy mailouts. We were going to increase that to seven hundred and fifty feet anyway. So what's going to happen there? What is going to happen when somebody wants to encroach upon someone else's property? All these cars coming through my neighborhood in the future, all this crap coming in from this proposed HOA? Ooh, the HOA that they proposed, are they going to give disclosure to the proposed residents there? That all they ha, they have to take care of their own roads, they have to take care of the lift station, they even have to take care of the lift station with Center Point adding to that. If I was a proposed homeowner, I wouldn't buy in there. I would not buy in there at all. I wouldn't pay the fee, I wouldn't pay the homeowner's fee at all. That is unjust and affects the neighborhood. Affects my neighborhood that has seen no complaints until these things happen from Center Point Church. You didn't hear from us. Been there a long time, been there twelve years. Until you want to send seventy-six more cars through our neighborhood and impose all of these things on the neighbors. Neighborhood than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against this item? Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to kind of touch on just basically what I've heard on the last.
On the mic.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just based on touching what I've heard from the last two, um, I am a realtor here in Palm Bay, Florida, and I have had two people that have called me because all of a sudden something popped up in their yard behind them, and they said, we got to get out of here. Why? Because they didn't know what was going on. And then all of a sudden the bulldozers and the trains and the stuff show up and the trees get cut down, and it, and it caused them a lot of stress. So based on what I was hearing from them two, and, well, not so much the HOA, I mean, the HOA, it is what it is, but, um, as far as people not knowing what's going on and the developments coming around, um, it does need to be a little bit more set. There's, I'm a realtor, and there's a lot of things I don't know until somebody decides to tell me. So I just want to kind of just bring that to the forefront. We got to find another way to do it. I think social media would be a great way to do it, so, so, I think.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, or Deputy Mayor Jaffe? Oh, no, as you were, Councilman Johnson.
I just want to make, like, just a comment real quick to the gentleman. He is, sir, your TikToks are fantastic. Your TikToks are fantastic. I've seen you, I've seen your social media. Now that you said that, you're very funny, and, uh, I enjoy watching this.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, Mayor, just to, to, um, the gentleman's point and what he's mentioned earlier is education. Um, I'd rather have Mr. Morton speak more on it, but a lot of these projects were approved sometimes two, three, four, or five years ago, and they're just now coming into fruition. Uh, but if Mr. Morton wants to speak on, because it was made mention about the seven hundred and fifty, um, feet and the plats, um, I think those are two different conversations, I believe. But I just, I don't want to speak ill, so if, or somebody.
It's been a while since I've sat in the planter church. At least if I get in trouble, you can jump up, but, so plats do continue to go through the full public process. Re-plats in general are not adding density, they're not adding additional dwelling units, they're modifying existing lot lines, they're changing easements, so it wouldn't create a new development out of a replat. I think there might be an obscure situation that if someone has a piece of land where the lot size already conforms to the underlying yield zoning, and they don't require a plat, so it's, it's a, it's a hypothetical, let's say someone had a five-acre piece or a one-acre piece, that they're separating into a one-acre standard platted lot that would have been allowed by, by a boundary line adjustment in Brevard County. They could go ahead and do that, plat or replat without coming, but m- most of the developments that are, um, what is our plat threshold? Is it five? How many lots is our plat, five lots is?
Three.
Three lot standard? Um, so anybody doing a real type of subdivision, still going to go through the full public process, still going to do the notice requirement, whatever the code currently requires, I think it's currently five, and the LBC change is asking for seven fifty. Is that, is that still where we're at? Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not in the planter church.
So, let me, if, if, if I may, sir, I'm sorry. Um, so Florida Statute one seventy-seven sets the standards for subdivision of land. So anything beyond two, you have to get a subdivision plat, okay? And, and the plat is a standard of dimensions and lengths and setting your monuments, and it's your, your legal by which the subdivision of land is built. So the review of those, that, what has to be in a plat is set by Florida statute, and it is what a licensed and, and insured surveyor puts his stamp on. So that standard doesn't change, and our Land Development Code follows along that standard. Right, so the process is changed by the legislation saying it no longer comes before you all for approval, just go to the surveyor. But I want to alleviate some of the concerns of the, of the constituents, if you would allow me to.
Yes, ma'am, carry on.
Okay, so for instance, the, the project that is, well, under consideration to be continued, that is for, as Ms. Smith pointed out, for a preliminary development plan and a final development plan. Again, a PUD, a subdivision of land, you would not look at the plats for that, but you will have that opportunity to, um, approve the, the preliminary development plan and then the final development plan. And as an exhibit to the final development plan, there will be a plat. So you will see it, but it would mirror the final development plan. Now, there are going to be instances where, I think as Mr. Morton was trying to, to, um, uh, define, where a, a certain piece of property has, you know, twenty acres and the underlying is residential, and they can do a straight subdivision. Under those circumstances, you will not see that subdivision, but then it is all, um, administratively approved. Most site plans, you know, commercial site plans, those are administratively approved anyway. Um, so that's the difference, the, the, what I have told, um, I can't recall his name.
Ma'am, right here.
This gentleman over here.
It's okay.
That's okay. Um, at one point was that keep yourselves aware of what's coming before planning and zoning, because that is your rezoning, that is your land use change, that's when you will get notification of projects.
At seven fifty is what? The distance.
Oh, the seven fifty. So that has not been changed yet. Uh, that was part of the phase two changes, so it is still five hundred, and that has not changed.
And that's what I was referencing, we haven't finished the phase two LDC.
Correct.
And then in terms of addressing the notice, public notices, is there something we can do? We've been wrestling with that, looking at it. Part of the challenge is we have ten days from application to approve the, the new plat process. Very sh, seven days now?
Well, it's, it's only, I'm sorry, sir, it's only seven days to make sure that the application is complete. It is not approving the application. It is just making sure the application is complete.
Talking about the final plats, there's a scot-free timeline to.
The application, not to approve the project. I just wanted to clarify that.
With that timeline, we, we don't know if we can mail, if we have enough time to mail, if we have enough time to, so that's something we're looking at. Maybe, so, you know, a web posting of current development projects, but that's something we're looking at in a, in a broader scope. I don't have an answer yet for that.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak for or against this item? Step right up, sir.
Butch, I ran two nineteen Trenton Avenue. Um, the lady who was just up here, I didn't catch her name. She tried to explain to this, this to me last meeting. I still don't know where a citizen has to be to be informed when a major development, three hundred and fifty houses, is going to go in at the end of web, at the end of Malabar Road. Where do I have to be to hear that? Is it the Planning and Zoning Board?
Mister, Mister, in the beginning process?
Yes, where?
Is not changing whatsoever.
Okay.
This is the final tail-end rubber stamp that the project's built and be done.
It's already been approved.
So.
But where would I have to be to know when a new development?
If you live within the area of the, of the proposed subdivision, if you're within five hundred feet, you will get a mailer. If you're not aware of it, then you would have to pay attention to planning and zoning meetings and council meetings.
Okay. Planning and zoning. Thank you.
Any, anyone else wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public here and asking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes fi, unanimously, five-zero. We're now on item number four. Ms. Smith.
Ord-
Ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. An ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget by appropriating and allocating funds as outlined in attached Exhibit A, consisting of three pages and incorporate in its entirety herein, recognizing that such appropriations must be made pursuant to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Bay, Chapter thirty-five, Finance, adopting, ratifying, confirming, and validating the allocations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and Mr. Morton?
Wait a second, please. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. Okay, I'm on the correct one. So these are still the, uh, we're still trying to phase out the quarterly budget amendment process, but of course we still have them for this ongoing budget cycle. Um, we have directed, uh, Finance to co, complete mid-year budget project reviews, and that was completed by the Finance Department. It's actually going back a little bit. The City Manager's Office in each respective department of all citywide active and funded budget projects did a review, and upon that detailed review of each project with the managing departments, uh, budget, and in the budget process you'll see going forward, there was a decision made to close or unfund any projects that either were completed, have no current activity or activity within the preceding fiscal year, have no plan to begin spending within the current or following fiscal year, and are no longer being pursued for various reasons. And so we're trying to true up the books in essence and show projects that are being closed, moved, discontinued, or incorporated into other projects. Uh, the list is long. If you've got technical questions, we do have Angelica Collins here from Finance to explain those tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? I don't see any. So I'm going to go right to the public. Anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public here and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Got a mo-
Second.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We are now on consent item number one. Oh, as you were.
May I clarify something really quick? Just because I want to be clear on the record, and I wanted to confirm with Patricia. We, we don't have additional time in the, in the statute. We have to approve or cite the reason it's incomplete within the seven days, like they're co-terminous, so the timeframe is extraordinarily compressed, and that's been part of the challenge in our, in our discussion. So I don't want to mislead if there's additional time. In theory, we have to approve those within seven days. I just wanted to be clear on that. We don't have a, a seven-day completeness period. In theory, we have to approve those within seven days, I just wanted to be clear on that, we don't have a seven day completeness period.
Right, if they're complete, we approve, we provide the notice, we can't request any extensions, we can't require them to request any extensions, that's all in there. The only extensions that could be is if they request it, otherwise we need to let them know whether it's complete, anything that they're missing. Or we need to approve, deny or approve with um conditions, it is very compressed.
That's the only point I was trying to make, we're trying to figure out how to communicate and do it timely and 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 it may be a post communication with the timeframe. To your point, sir, I just don't know, but I'd love to chat with you if you have ideas, so thank you for bringing that issue up again, just wanted to be clear on that. Yes, sir, understood. That's uh. Where we we don't have much of home rule on that particular item. So we're now on uh consent, uh, item number one. Uh, before we we go there, Ms. Smith, you want to read the caption?
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty seven, an ordinance of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida. Amending the Code of Ordinances Title Three, Administration, Chapter Thirty Four, Human Resources. Subchapter, General Provisions, by enacting post-employment restrictions and standards of conduct for former municipal employees. Providing for the repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. Providing for inclusion in the City of Palm Bay Code of Ordinances, providing for severability clause, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, I'm going to defer to Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just for the record, I don't consider myself a tyrant, I serve on a board of five and I'm one voice and one vote of five people. I since serving on council, I've witnessed some some things that I I feel like aren't good business practices. And uh, asked the city attorney to draft language for 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 council discussion. Uh, specifically historically, there was a utilities director. Uh, that now works for a consultant performing our wastewater shipment facility. And uh, my fear is these uh director positions, they're in charge of managing budgets, they know our procurement procedures. And uh, they're able to go to private enterprise and exploit the city, costing us time and money. So I'm bringing forth this motion, I'm making motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty seven.
Um, let, I mean, since it's already pulled.
Yeah, I got a open discussion, I pull it, I pull my motion.
Yeah, so the very first thing is, and I've got some speakers, but. As you know, and I've mentioned this before, Deputy Mayor, thank you for for highlighting this, but. My concerns are unintended consequences, right? That that is huge, um, and that that's a concern for me, so. In that capacity, maybe stressing a higher level of employee. Uh, as in director or above.
It's it's written as only level one, directors, city managers.
Just directors?
Yeah.
No, I I don't think it is.
It's been revised, sir.
Oh, okay.
If I may.
Yes, ma'am, carry on, because I didn't, okay. Last I saw it, it didn't.
No, we have discussed uh it and I did needed to uh. Uh, announce what the changes, which is why he pulled it from consent, so that that revision could be made. And that's on me for not announcing it at the time I read it.
Well.
And let me do so.
Yes, ma'am.
It would be thirty four sixteen dash uh subsection A, the provision related to um contracting. That would apply the uh former city employees, specifically the employees um that it would apply to would be. The city manager, deputy city manager, city attorney, deputy city attorneys, city clerk, deputy city clerk, city engineer and department heads. Those would be the group that would be prohibited for the uh two years.
Okay, thank you, um, Kels- Kelsman Hem.
I'm glad you clarified that because that was something that was important to me, um. Here at the City of Palm Bay, we do have a lot of blue collar workers that are working multiple jobs, um, just to use an example. Uh, we, you know, we buy parts in our fleet and our fleet department from O'Reilly's. That means we can't have a guy go and work for O'Reilly's when he gets off of work. So I I do want to make sure that that, you know, we're discussing something that is actually going to matter. And I would also like to um have a waiver process. If something is there and there is something that is not going to affect it, say he's a, say he. He was the director of of Parks and Recreation and and now he's. He's digging the ditches for somebody, now they can't put in for something, so. I would, I would really like to see a waiver process be put in there. Um, because with Palm Bay, one of my goals was Palm Bay being self-sustaining. We are one of the largest employers in Palm Bay. So that means everybody that's there can't work somewhere else for X amount of years. Um, I would, I I would, I would love to see every one of our contractors be Palm Bay. Palm Bay businesses, but I mean, I I can only hope for that, but. Um, I do think there should be some kind of a waiver in case something like this does happen. And um, you know, you you have a group of people that can assess it and make sure there's no uh, there's no. Effects or anything that's going to touch that, but I am, I am completely in favor of this.
Paragraph paragraph G has a waiver, waiver, waiver process.
Thank, thank you, um. Please let me uh.
Deputy Mayor.
Let me, let me pass this on, uh, everyone on the dais, if you don't mind. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you.
City attorney's got uh some work.
Well, this question might be for her, um, or or for Deputy Mayor Jaffe, does the same apply for city council?
That policy already exists.
That, that. Well, yeah, well, I I just, I remember and I don't want to. Point the finger at any previous city council members, but I know Bill Batten will remember, uh, when it came to a waste management contract. Of somebody who on the, yep, so. Yeah, so that that's that. So, so, but it happens, so that that was my only concern, but I'm. I'm good.
To your, to your argument, that policy already exists. And I think it might have been caused by your example. I'm not sure, but I haven't checked, but. All right, Madam Attorney?
Yes, actually, I um fuzzed in for the same thing Deputy Mayor was saying. Currently in subsection G, it states that the city council may grant a waiver to this restriction by majority vote during a publicly noticed meeting. Waiver request must be submitted in writing and must include the former employee's role while at the city. Their proposed current role with the vendor, justification for the waiver demonstrating that is in the best interest of the city. So the ordinance currently does have a waiver process in which council would make that decision and there would be enough information so that. Both council and the public would know why or why not we think that this is or is in the best interest of the city.
Thank you, ma'am, Councilman Langvin.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, um, I'm a huge fan of this ordinance. Uh, I believe though, if we're going to have a waiver process, it should be uh waived by a super majority, not by a simple majority.
Okay, thank you, sir. We don't have any speaker cards, so Deputy Mayor, now I could entertain a a motion.
I make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty seven as produced.
I've got a motion.
Second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'm calling the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. We are now on procurement item number one, Mr. Morton. Thank you again, I'm Deputy Mayor City Council, it's been um coming up on the maximum five year term pursuant to the procurement guidelines and the. Health insurance contracts and agreements will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Garant Group is the city's broker of record for health insurance and the related plans. At the city's request, the group conducted a competitive bidding process and obtained quotes for the benefits. What you have before you is the proposed new uh staff recommendations from those bids. That will affect the city's medical insurance, our our dental plans and our Cobra administration. Uh, we had staff go ahead and add all the relevant data so people could see it in terms of what the city pays, what the employee's cost share is to the benefits. Uh, what our annual rate increases will be and when there are caps on those, which is fantastic, some of those are capped for a period of time, but what we can expect for annual. A premium or rate increases. Um, and we are asking a council to go ahead and award the approval of the medical insurance agreement contract to Cigna. Of dental insurance to Cigna and of our FSA Cobra administration to the P and A group. Okay, thank you, Councilman Hem.
And now, before we discuss, has our city still got the way committee? And did way committee give one of these or one of these?
Can you publicly answer those questions, please? Come on, come on up, please.
Hi, good evening, um, to answer your question, no, it did not go before the way committee, we don't present this to the way committee um in in recent years.
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor, any speaker cards on this item number one of on the procurement?
No, ma'am.
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes, any opposed, passes unanimously, we're now on unfinished business, uh, item number one, uh, Deputy Mayor.
So I'm appointing the two members to the Community Development Advisory Board. I'll make the motion to appoint Matthew Osterlog to the banking industry position on the Community Development Advisory Board.
Second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously.
For the uh, for the second seat, I make a motion to to appoint Maisha Carr. To the resident of the city position on the Community Development Advisory Board.
Second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item number three unfinished, or item number two. Unfinished business, Mr. Morton. Thank you again, we're bringing back the furniture item for building E, the miscellaneous cooperative purchase furnitures, fixtures and equipment or FFE for building Florida. Or for building A, excuse me, which is through the state of Florida and Omni Partners contract. Was a question last time and the reconciliation of the numbers, the number you have before you tonight is the is the actual number of four eighty eight eight forty seven. If you notice the delta on the final invoice of uh four fifty seven eight thirty two ninety five. That thirty one thousand dollars, fourteen cents and change was an item for the second floor training room that was already purchased using ARPA funds, but we did count it in the reconciliation. You also notice uh with the piggyback contract and the timing, there was a two point two percent increase, which was a net result of ten thousand seventy two dollars and thirty cents. Um, and you can also see the assignments of the line items of of which budgets paid for uh furniture. And that's all I have, we do have Juliette here tonight, if you have any uh further questions or um would like some answers. I'll standing and uh, I don't see, council has any questions, I think.
I I just have a comment, Mayor, I just, I mean, I. I like the way this was presented the second go around, I I believe the the figures a lot less than what was originally presented before. The one thing that's challenging to accept for me is the price increase when the quote was received back in like April of earlier this year and. I know Mr. Morton wasn't on on the staff then, but I just, you know, poor staff like brings stuff to us timely, so we can make decisions sooner.
Anyone else have any questions, uh, Councilman Johnson?
Well.
No, you.
Yeah, to your point, well, um. Yeah, because then it puts us in the hot seat and makes us look like we held on to it, so I I hear you Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Um, that way we have more time to make a sound decision. So I I'm I'm in agreement with you, so if we can just make sure that this doesn't happen again. Um, I I trust Mr. Morton to make sure that that it doesn't, but that doesn't put us in, that backs us in the corner. And we've had that happen a few times before, so thank you for bringing that up, sir.
Well, I I'll weigh in on that too, because I've noticed that uh, he he says, you know, what's in the delta, right? I like that, that type of terminology and what's in the details, right? Um, and and I've seen even the agenda items, uh, probably a little more detailed, so I want to commence that for that as well. So thank you, uh, Mr. Morton. Uh, we have seen a a difference with the agenda items and the summaries and and I appreciate that. Uh, especially when you say what's in the delta. Hoorah. So counsel? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to appro- uh approve this furniture purchase.
Second.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson, any further discussion, gentlemen?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none.
I just have, I just have one question, if I could.
Yes, sir, I did.
I'm sorry, I was about to hit it, I I.
Carry on.
Um, if we do pull the trigger on it, and we obviously are how it looks. And they don't deliver on time, do we see a benefit on our end? Uh, is there something in there um that says they have a certain amount of time to deliver to us or it's?
That, that.
If they can punish us, I think we should be able to punish them for not delivering.
Uh, I'll I'll ask uh Madam Moscone.
Thank you for the question, as far as we know, there is not a um performance penalty. Don't usually see those in commodity contracts, but it's an excellent question. Um, and we can certainly uh get clarification on that and bring it back to council.
Thank you.
I would just make the statement that, you know, this is a piggyback contract and for you to be vetted to be on a, on a contract like that, you have to be a contractor or a vendor that performs. So um, I would just make, I think we're okay.
Copy that, I still have a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Johnson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously, we're now on new business item number one, Madam Smith.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty six, a resolution of the City of Palm Bay, Brevard County, Florida. Amending Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty five. As amended by Resolutions twenty twenty five dash ten and twenty twenty five dash twenty. Adopting the five year capital improvement program for the fiscal years twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five. Through twenty twenty eight through twenty twenty nine for the City of Palm Bay, Florida. Receiving resolutions or partial resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am, uh, Mr. Morton. Thank you, similar to my explanation, another one, this was a detailed review of projects. Within departments and in an effort to improve efficiency and clarity of our budget moving forward. It was concluded to close or unfund any projects that were either completed, have no current activity or activity within the preceding fiscal year. Have no plan to begin spending within the current or following fiscal year and are allowing, longer being pursued for following reasons. Or were not actually capital improvement projects, like some minor repairs, replacements or operational needs. And the primary citywide goal moving forward is to have a manageable and realistic active project workload based on staffing, based on funding capabilities. Uh, based on our objective reality year to year and a project closure doesn't mean that it may not come back in a future future year, that it's no longer a necessity. Uh, just having that much clutter on these lists is is just not productive or easy for people to track. And if we have further questions, again, Angelica Collins is here to help us. I don't see any questions at this moment, uh, Deputy Mayor, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay, so I need a motion, gentlemen.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously, we're now on item number two, Mr. Morton. Thank you, tonight is consideration of allocation of funds from the Red Speed School Zone Camera Program for administrative costs. We're requesting six thousand dollars from revenues generated through the city's Red Speed School Zone Camera Program. That's in an effort to offset administrative costs associated with the program's operation and enforcement. To cut to the to the bottom of the line item which is in here, we've obviously had a lot of challenges operationally with the inception of Red Speed. There's been loss of trust in the vendor, which I think has impacted the community's trust and perception in the program. This money would be used to fund uh an additional number of hearing or hearings through the um administrative law judge or 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 hearing official. It's outlined in Palm Bay Police Department General Order five oh five about where the revenues may or may not be used. And it's not only safety improvements, but it's also for funding this. I did also include the total uh line item in that revenue account that's been generated by the Red Speed cameras. Um, total fiscal impact of the request is six thousand in a larger con- context in case the question arises. Um, of course, we're we were having discussions, the chief and I and and the department about bringing Red Speed back to coincide with the beginning of the school year. Uh, when we see a lot of other uh schools. Uh, when we see a lot of other uh, school zone enforcement and safety announcements and programs. As of this day, we are not comfortable or confident that Red Speed has ameliorated our concerns, has solved their problems. Or has um, um, fixed their response issues, their coordination issues, their technical issues. So it's something that is we are working on ongoing. It has no day-to-day cost to the city other than the staff time trying to reconcile. Uh, but again, I wanted to provide that informational update, but let you know that um, this is the request before you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, council? No questions? Uh, then any speaker cards, Deputy Mayor?
Lance Fisher.
Lance Fisher, former deputy chief of police department. Thank you, Mr. Morton, for highlighting the uh, ineffectiveness of this program. Uh, as you remember from the history, I was actually sat on the the beginning boards of this when this this uh, this idea came to light. Um, for full transparency, in those discussions, this was a money grab, a straight-up money grab. There was zero discussion about children's safety. I know that was used to get this program up and running. I can provide the text messages from Greg Lutul, the commander that oversaw this program, to uh, myself and Chief Agello. Highlighting the amount of money the the city was going to receive, or the PD was going to receive versus what was going to go into the um, crossing guards funds. And I believe there was an LOL. Um, secondly, this is a failed program. We've seen this time and time again. I think um, we saw just recently a Fox News article. Um, I try to do truth and facts, but I'll just go off of theirs today. A lady um, was written a citation for an excessive speed. And the only reason that she she was able to um, get off in the violation because she happened to have a GPS. It was a, it was a, it was a uh, uh, business vehicle and she had a GPS. From the uh, from the report, it said that the Red Speed camera had added two vehicle speeds together. And my understanding from the report was she was one of the very few that day that received grace and was not given, or did not have to pay the fine. How many other people that did not have GPSs have have been have been written these citations? Three hundred and three thousand dollars from the report that I wrote. That's thirty thousand three hundred um, citizens that have that have been written citations. So my question with this would be this then, how many physical citations were written up by Palm Bay police officers? If we see that the excessive speed in our school zones, how many physical citations were written? Because we can use the data to show what school zones are being are that these speed, that the that these violations are taking place. There's a, there has to be a liability on the city. If 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 we have documentation of of speed zones that are threatening our children, then why, then why are we not using our physical police presence to to stop and and write those citations? So I understand that, you know, that that there are limitations to our officers. And and I do think, and I do agree with Chief Agello, we have a great, we have a great police department. I agree that. They're shorthanded. I've disagreed with the leadership. And this program, including myself, the failed leadership that brought this program without the transparency. This is a complete money grab. This is not about children. I can't think of any instance where where a child was struck in a um, a school zone that caused a serious bodily injury or death. I can't think of two instances in the Bayside Public Parking Lot. Where a child was struck and killed and a and a pedestrian that was walking through the fire lane was struck and killed. We have not done any extra enforcement in the public's parking lot. And we've had two fatalities that are documented. So for this program to even continue to us to spend, charge Red Speed the six thousand dollars. Don't charge our citizens. That's six hundred citizens that are paying for this. These administrative costs should not even be in question today. Today, the vote should be disband the program, disband the program.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hammer?
I would like to just, I have a question. Is this six thousand going going towards how many people that we have that are fighting their tickets?
Yeah, I mean, chief can come up, but in essence, yes, it's to to fund additional hearings before the magistrate.
Good evening. So the six thousand dollars that's um, part of this item is for magistrate fees. Um, and so in the contract, when the contract was negotiated and signed by all parties involved, to include those that were running operations and overseeing the project. It's in the language that we, as a city, as a PD, will be responsible for covering those costs for the magistrate. So that six thousand dollars is to go moving forward. Because we have several hundreds of citizens that are contesting citations, right? So that's multiple hearings. We have them already lined up till December. And we still have more that we need to, we need to line up. So um, that's strictly what that's for. It's to cover the cost of the magistrate being here during that duration of the hearing.
Any other questions?
I do, um.
Go ahead, sir.
Have we got inability to freeze these until we can have a discussion about Red Speed? Because anybody who's done jury duty knows, you have to be able to prove something beyond reasonable doubt. And I I, anybody, anybody of those three or those three hundred people, they have reasonable doubt. Is 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 how I feel about it. They, I mean, they could have been following the law, they could have been breaking it, but there's, there's the, there's the idea out there that the system does not work. And I think that's what these three hundred are are there for, because they're seeing so many people have these issues, and they're just hoping theirs was one of the issues.
I I think, and chief, um, is there any credibility to these tickets? In other words. Well, I know we're just talking about administrative fees, but now he opened up an another line of questioning. Um, from what I'm tracking. When a citation is issued, it has been warranted that they are going whatever eleven miles over that speed.
Correct. Aside from those, I forget, was a couple of hundred, uh, the Miami tickets, we'll call.
The Miami tickets, yes.
Um, and and there was a few, I believe it was one of the uh, off of Palm Road in Glenham, that school zone area, um, when we first initiated, kicked it off before we, uh, right up, right before we shut it down the first time. Um, because of a technical issue with the software uh, from Red Speed. The violations are legit, right? Now, um, just just to reiterate, this the six thousand dollar ask has nothing to do with the citations and paying the citations or not paying the citation. That's for us to have the magistrate sit there during the hearing to hear our citizens, our residents being, have, you know, have their day in court, right? To um, say why or why not they 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 should pay the citation or not. And then obviously, it's up to the magistrate to dismiss it. So violations are recurring. So to say, you know, some of the things that have been said, that the violations are all false, that's not accurate. Um, so however, with that, I will say that I've lost faith in the program, you know, and until Red Speed can come back and tell us, and we've been working very diligently with the city attorney's office. Who Deputy City Attorney Messenger has been doing a great job and been very patient with this company. Um, you know, until they can come back and show uh, good faith, which they haven't been able to. Um, you know, our recommendation moving forward is to move away from it. That's been our stance for a few months now. We're just waiting for legal, our city attorney's office to um, be able to get a hold of the the company and and go that route, so.
Thank you. That being said, I'm going to weigh in on something. We still have a speeding problem. It is a huge speeding problem, uh, not only within our schools. Um, but I also want to be on the record as saying, these are administrative uh, citations. You don't have to get points on your license. This is to change your behavior. I've witnessed that. Speeding time and time again, and I've said it publicly. I've seen people pass school buses. Um, now we've got school buses that are going to have those uh, cameras that you can see that. Um, but the speeding problem in the City of Palm Bay even today. Does exist, and we don't have enough patrol officers to patrol our streets, gentlemen. Um, and the object is to to provide this administrative fee to change the behavior. And at the same time, in hopes that they do change their behavior and they don't get points assessed on their license. So I just wanted to clarify that. Councilman Johnson, you you're in, you weighed in.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm in agreement with Councilman Hammer, chief, and you, Mayor. Um, because remember way back when we were talking about the piggyback, we were going back and forth. I was asking you questions. But I'm glad you came right now and said, yeah, I had, I've lost faith.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we we always want to improve our public safety, right? And there's always newest and greatest innovations that are out there in tech and technology and software um, that help towards that cause. Um, and unfortunately, some, this, right now, as of now, um, you know, our residents have lost faith in it. There's no trust in it. Uh, and right now, myself, you know, and and our police department. But, you know, we we do have to go through a process, right? We have to go through a legal process with our our legal counsel and to ensure that everything's on the up and up. Um, before that decision, if it doesn't, when when it, if it does come, it, you know, we can, we can do it uh, reasonably with all of our facts laid out and and everything outlined as to why um, they didn't live up, live up to their end of the bargain. Um, you know, they were vetted, you know, they they come, they came, um, you know, endorsed by Florida Police Chiefs Association. So um, that's neither here nor there. So um, not everything works. You know, and I'll be first to say that, you know, this one right now is 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 a problem and um, we're better off not utilizing it at the moment. That's why, speaking with the city manager. Um, I'd rather not turn them back on, even in part-time capacity, morning and afternoon, until everything um, is taken care of. And right now, we're not there yet.
Thank you, sir. And then, following up, Mayor, with what you said, the the easiest way to correct, one of the easiest ways to correct um, poor behaviors to hit the pockets. So I do agree in that sense. But my question, I guess, is for the city attorney. Um, how long ago have you reached out to Red Speed and how long has it been since they haven't responded?
Madam Attorney?
I don't have the exact timeframe, but they, we provided um, correspondence to them. They responded. We um, and asked for additional information and made additional arguments. I do know Mr. Messenger has been working diligently with um, police being able to present our side as far as what the contract is, the different violations they have and up with the contract. So I don't have the exact uh, dates and times uh, right now. I do know we have been in uh, contact with them. Uh, them, but I can certainly provide that to council once I'm able to um, circle back with Mr. Messenger. But I do know he's been actively working with um, police. And um, Red Speed as far as trying to address some of these issues and the frustrations of the city and their breaching of our contract.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And to that point, is, this might be for you, this might be for Mr. Morton, it might be for the mayor. Is there anything we can do as a council to speed this up? Because for me, I'm like, this is getting ridiculous that it's taken this long to address this. The chief's tired of it, the citizens are tired of it, our council's tired of it. I think everybody's tired of it at this point. So this is something we all agree on. So let's move diligently on what we agree on to hold people accountable, so.
Yeah, I I I want to just tap into that a little bit, and then I'm going to, I'm going to tee it over to the city managers for his response and then to Deputy Mayor. But I I want to tag a little bit on that, because my concerns are still going to be, i- it's a customer service with that's, that that's ultimately what what it is. And this program, as you said, was vetted, the Police Chiefs Association. So my question is more along the lines of, what would make you comfortable to reinstitute this if at all possible with this company? And or is there another company that has uh, a higher level of service that you've been tracking?
Well, uh, that's tough to say right now, um, because we're in the middle of this one, you know, and I don't want to go too far ahead of it. Um, right now, the one, what we're looking at, our staff is looking at, you know, is that, and just speaking with Deputy City Attorney Messenger today, this afternoon, is our residents have lost trust in this program. And so when they lose trust in this program that I brought forward, um, that's a problem for me. And so right now, I have no intention to bring it back, because I don't personally, I don't believe that they'll be able to.
Restore their trust.
Well, restore the trust, A, but um, resolve the issue that we've been dealing with.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Morton, did you want to respond to uh, Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, just just to just to wait and say, you know, we've had long conversations, many conversations. We believe in using a euphemism, there's been two strikes. We can't afford a third. Public trust is a bigger issue than 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 most things at this moment. We want to move forward with transparency. We want to have the public's trust and buy-in, of course. We're not seeing a path forward. I've spoken with an additional service provider just to try to get a baseline to understand. It appears at the moment, a lot of the various systems are problematic. There's lots of technical issues and compliance issues and magistrate issues, and so we're not finding an alternative. And for the moment, the important thing to note for everyone listening is the program is suspended. It's non-operational. It's also not costing us additional money to operate or run, cor- correct? I'm not stating that. And so we're working through it diligently, and sometimes that 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 is the, that is the sacrifice or speed, is is making sure we're working through every angle and also having a plan B, if possible, to pick up where we leave off, right? Building a structure to move forward, not just just jumping to to end something, but can we do a better iteration? Is there a better solution? What is the solution? And and bring a total package back to council so you can consider it in full context. So um, I don't know if that if that answers our satisfied, but we are pursuing it. But also important, more importantly, trying to figure out how we protect the safety of our children in school zones. And so we don't want to lose sight of what the focus of of the whole mission is in this.
Thank you. I appreciate your your comments. I'm going to tee it over to Councilman or Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, this was something that was approved, you know, by by previous council, and and I don't know what that that thought process looked like. And and approving it, I think it's a great learning experience for the city, albeit painful. But, you know, proof of concept, like, does it work somewhere else before we implement it within our city? And just to my colleagues on the dais, you know, I think we just need to be a little more tactful. Uh, some of our conversations could make our city attorney's job more difficult um, moving forward. So I think we just need to trust in staff and the city attorney's ability to navigate the next steps. And uh, and you know, leave it at that.
Okay. So right now, I'm going to wait, you know, I want to ring it back in. We're talking about the six thousand dollars. We're not talking about the whole program. Uh, those six thousand dollars. And and let me just mention this. According to our agenda item, I just want to give kudos. To Lieutenant Kilmer, who delivered the comprehensive presentation to help educate Palm Bay residents, uh, which remains accessible to all community members. So I I know that that was, she was tasked with that, and she went above and beyond to to handle that. So I wanted to commend her for that. Uh, but right now, we're talking about six thousand dollars. Um, and I've got a speaker card by Master Chief Batt.
Bill Battin, five eighty six, Bill Battin, five eighty six Ocean Spray Street Southwest. I know the, the way we got to this point was a little bit different. And so I won't be too upset with that, because I got a lot of good input by the, by how we got here this time. But it does generate two questions. Right? The first one, what was the total cost of implementing this system? Because that is the pocketbook. I know supposedly the company was supposed to have been paying for it for the installation. Were they doing all the labor force? Were they doing all the uh, hardwiring? So what was the actual city cost that we had to put into this? Because that is our pocketbook. You know, we want to hit the pocketbook? Well, that came out of my budget someplace, right? Uh, so what was that costing? Will we be able to get it back? The next question was, you know, just Bill Battin being the sneaky little devil he is. I'd say instead of spending the six thousand dollars in litigation, we could spend six thousand dollars on overtime. To some of the police force that could sit there and be writing tickets. And I promise you, that cop car sitting there in the speeds in the that zone, that slows people down. Almost quicker than the flashing camera light did. Six months later, they get ticket, right? Just a little bit of overtime for the police department, and then we'd be getting some of that resource back to us. Because every ticket, every dollar from the ticket does not come back to the city, just like most of this one wasn't coming back to the city also. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morton, do you have those numbers, or should we call up the chief?
Yeah, we, you can come up, chief, please, and explain if we have done any accounting.
So yes, for the implementation of the program, it cost the city zero dollars. Um, and the only thing after that was just uh, man-hours, uh, just reviewing video in terms of uh, validating the movement violations from my, by our traffic enforcement.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards, uh, Deputy Mayor?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass.
Got a motion by Councilman Landerman?
I'll second.
I got a second by Deputy Mayor Jaffe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four zero. We are now on item number three. Mrs. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. At the request of Deputy Mayor Jaffe, I created a policy for proclamations. And just a a brief overview, uh, we're limiting to three per meeting. Uh, they must be sponsored by a council member. Um, there's no limit to those proclamations that are presented um, off-site or mailed and proclamation. And proclamations must be submitted at least six weeks in advance of the date requested.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, you wanted to weigh in on this some more, or?
Yeah, Mayor, just, uh, over the over the last several months, you know, residents have, uh, have mentioned. That the non-business portion of the meeting has has gone long, some of the proclamations, recognitions, and on top of when we do presentations that. That can eat up quite a bit of time, and, um, I'm just bringing these suggestions for for conversation. I'm not married to to any of these ideas, it's just just for conversation.
Well, you know, here here's the thing with that, I I think this is a a fairly good idea, but I I can't agree with it, and I'll tell you why. A lot of the proclamations that we have done is for the public, uh, awareness, whether it's cancer. Uh, whether it's different groups, um, today, for example, there were, there were only two, which we were recognizing our staff. Um, and the other one, the mayor's business spotlight, but there have been many others that we, like Holocaust, we we've honored. Uh, that association, um, we've honored several others that wanna raise the awareness of whatever program they're bringing up. You may have the consensus, I think three may be, uh, a sweet spot, uh, but what happens to the fourth one? Right, so that that's that's where I'm at with that, um, the idea of. Unlimited, and we present that out, that that's what we currently do anyway, uh, it's those that wanna come before council. That, and keep in mind, it's the residents that wanna come before council, it's these organizations that wanna come before council, so. To limit them, I I think the limit of five is what we currently have, is that correct?
It's four.
It's four, the limit of four, I think, is is probably where we're at right now, so, um, I'm good with that, but I've got Councilman Hammer.
I don't see Daniel up there, but, um, do we have any idea if First Friday is gonna come back? Because that would be a great time to do presentations and stuff if we're doing First Friday again. I know it was supposed to come back, whether it is or not, I'm not sure, does anybody know?
Perhaps Juliet may be able to answer, or or Mr. Dr. Robinson.
Counsel, counsel will have to get back to you with that, we'll, uh, meet with Daniel and get some insight on that and, um, respond.
Okay, 'cause I think, you know, First Friday, everybody comes together, and there's stages out there, there's, there's an idea of. Items to be presented then, so.
Yeah, so, um, as far as the First Fridays go, we are looking at a concert. Type series through the city, it may not occur as often, like, once a month, but we will have them, but with. Most of our events, when we have the stage, if all we need to know is a time when you wanna present a proclamation, we could add that to our stage times. That's not a problem, we just have to coordinate it.
Thank you, Councilman Mason?
Yeah, thank you, I mean, that's a great idea by Councilman Hammer, I like that, personally, um, I'm okay with having no proclamations during council meetings. Um, I'm really just here to to get to work, and the events where we have fun, we can, we can make people feel good. And then limit it to one or two presentations, and then let's get to work.
Okay, thank you, anyone else wish to weigh in, uh, Councilman Johnson?
I'm with Councilman Landerman.
Okay, so, any speaker cards?
Pastor Mark Miller.
Mark Miller, eight nine eight Nelson Avenue, probably taking opposing view here, I I think the proclamations, the certificates, recognition, man, I I love. I think it shows a lot of the great things that are happening in our city, it shows what's important to our city, the fact that you would take the time. To write a recognition letter, to that you would write a statement or proclamation or support it, so I I think that is a a win. Um, certainly understand the desire for a policy, uh, I get that, I would not eliminate all the ones here. I mean, you you probably don't get to see the smiles and the impact of the people. I remember the very first proclamation I received here, it was probably my first time or maybe second time inside a council chamber. And it was a huge ordeal to come before you guys, as for those, sorry, for those of us that come every day now, right, or every meeting. It may not carry the same significance, but when you looked at the faces, like those two kids that were up here today with, uh, with the shack and all of that. Now, I agree it should be a limit, we don't need to spend an hour on proclamations during the city council meeting. But but to select a few and to have them sponsored by you guys, and you guys decide which ones you wanna bring up here, I I I think it's important. I also would like to see a list of those that are done outside of the city council meeting, um, I I I, it'd be great to see a list posted. I don't know if it's posted somewhere, it's public record, uh, or maybe it's in the city council agenda, and it's just under there is a list of all the ones you guys did. In the last two weeks, or the last month, or the last whatever, but I think it shows a lot of great support for what the faith is. Also, uh, there's a phrase in there, um, that I think needs clarification. It says, in order for it to qualify, it does not promote one religion over another. Um, it's really vague and risky, as a nation who is built on the foundation of Jesus Christ and Christianity. What happens to our National Day of Prayer proclamation? Is that, is that a, i- i- is that showing preference for Christianity, and and so there's gonna be no longer. Blessed is the nation whose God is Lord, and no more, no, no, no speaking a- a- about it, is that showing? Is that showing a preference over one religion over the other, so to me, it's really vague, and so, I, you know, I I would. Look at maybe clarifying that, if you do have to have a policy, um, you know, I would spend some time there, um, there's some. It it's vague and risky as far as I'm concerned, but, um, anyway, that being said, that's, I'm out of time. But I think they're a great thing.
Thank you, uh, any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so, um, the magic number that you have, there's three, um, so I wanted to talk through that. Sometimes they could, is it possible to have them three weeks in advance as opposed to six?
Yeah, well, we need a motion first, right?
Um, can we get clarity from the city attorney, just on Pastor Mark's statement number ten, on promoting one religion over another?
Mentioning one religion doesn't promote it over another, promote where essentially you don't want council. To have a proclamation in which they say X religion is better than Y religion, you can have a proclamation that speaks about religion. We often, you know, have, usually it's individual council members, they may have a proclamation that, you know, supports, you know, pastor, um. Appreciation Day or a church's anniversary, we may have things about synagogues, it's just, you don't go say, hey, this. The city of Palm Bay, you know, by the hand of the mayor says it on behalf of council, this religion is better than the other. It's not anti-religion, you can say, talk about religion, we just, council doesn't get to pick a religion. And say that it is better than another religion, speaking of a religion is not, that doesn't say that, hey. Speaking about prayer and other that this religion is bad, or this is the official religion of council, so I don't, you can speak about religion. You can support churches, you can support synagogues, you can support other things without saying that the official religion of the city of Palm Bay. Thus says the mayor on behalf of city council is X, and that's what it's getting at to. Because we talk about religion all the time, there's no prohibition about speaking about religion.
Thank you. He's he's speaking about one religion over the other, well, the proclamation that we issued, um, during the National Day of Prayer, is that effective?
No, and I said that, I mean, it's not.
Okay, copy that.
We're not saying that this particular religion is bad, or this religion is not as, it's not the preferred religion of the city of Palm Bay. There is no comparison.
And I I just wanna bring to the, to remembrance that that National Day of Prayer proclamation mentions our founding fathers. At the same time, so I'm, I think we're good there as well, uh, Councilman Land.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to know if, um, the deputy mayor would like to to weigh in more after hearing from the four of us and hearing from public comment, if he wants to, what's his thoughts?
Absolutely, yes, sir, 'cause I, that that'll formulate the the motion, I'm sure, um, so yeah, my my. My thing is, uh, that leeway, those six weeks, um. Are you solid on the six weeks, or are you?
I think three is a fair compromise, um, one other item, I think, is it could be important to add is just directors can add. Their departments, normal proclamations like Parks and Rec, Utilities, Safety Water Week, things of that nature can be, you know, added by, uh, by directors. So I think we could add that. Sponsored by a council member.
So, Madam Therese, those two adjustments, I think, uh, would you need anything else?
Does that make sense? Or, okay.
Okay, copy that.
Understood, council or city manager.
Okay, Therese, is that clear?
Understood.
All right, so the six weeks down to three, and then, uh, council slash city manager. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved based on what was reiterated to the clerk.
The amendment, exactly, I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, signed it by, uh, Councilman Johnson. Uh, I don't see any other, oh, yes, Councilman Landerman, as you were. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes four one, uh, we're now on. Number four discussion of city advisory boards, Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Yeah, if you guys can turn your attention to the, uh. The packet add, uh, that discusses, you know, backup documentation concerning the city boards specifically. The Infrastructure Advisory Oversight Board, the same Sustainability Advisory Board. And that is it.
Okay.
Bringing this to your attention, um, sp- specifically, there, I feel like these boards are, uh, are not functioning as they were originally intended. There are quorum issues, there's attendance issues, there's several meetings with no agendas. Um, a lot of staff time goes into preparing for these no meetings, and, uh, wanted to bring it to council's. View, view, so they can, uh, so we can make a decision on whether we wanna continue these boards or not, I know specifically. The Sustainability Advisory Board, um, is lacking appointments from, from two members, my my appointment. Uh, resigned, and I don't intend on filling this position, so I don't think we're gonna continue to have a quorum on that, on that board in general, um, so, yeah.
Um, I I'll weigh in on this, the Infrastructure Advisory Oversight Board, I think we owe that to the community based on the Go Road. Bond program, right, I think, uh, it would be premature, I, maybe we need to massage that one a bit. Um, I do understand your argument, um, I'll go ahead and agree with you on the sustainability board, 'cause if we, if you're not appointing someone. Then we're we're gonna lack a quorum all throughout at that point, right, um, so, but on that Infrastructure Advisory Oversight Board. I I wouldn't wanna see us, um, lose that out, I wouldn't wanna see the Sustainability Advisory Board go away either. But the quorum issue has got to be addressed now, how much do we invest in that, I guess that's the question, right? Deputy Mayor, how much do we invest in massaging, trying to get the right people to to serve the community?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to hear from staff's viewpoint, um, like, who is actually your tense of meeting from staff on the IOAB, uh, you know, Infrastructure Advisory Board, but. I mean, I think we can all agree that the road bond program is an epic failure, and, uh, they're a big part of that reason, so, uh, I don't see why that should continue. They should be continuing advising council or the city on the road bond program.
Um, I've got several speakers, Councilman Johnson first.
I'm sorry, um, I'm 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 just laughing, yeah, so I, one, I will say the best. Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting we had was when we had a a collective meeting with council and. The Infrastructure Advisory Board at the same time, that was in twenty nineteen, and after that COVID happened, and we hadn't had one since. Um, and what I've found, and I'm just gonna put it out there, uh, former city engineer, former public. Work, uh, Works Director, Traffic Engineer, whatever title you wanna give the gentleman, um, which I'm also glad Deputy Mayor Jaffe. Um, put forth the policy he put in place for, was telling the Infrastructure Advisory Board one thing, and then I was hearing a different thing myself. So, in regards to communication of what everybody's talking about, I wouldn't put it on the board, I would put it on. And I hate to say the word, bad actors, um, and that's what happens in, you know, any field, in personal training, you can have bad actors, and. Healthcare, you can have bad actors, it, you know, and that's what usually messes things up, so. I do think the boards should go if we're not gonna utilize it correctly or as efficiently as we can, but. I know I've I had calls and watched some meetings, and some of the information I was seeing was, I'm like, hmm, so. But, um, yeah, and even the mistakes that were happening with the, with the, um. With the road bond was not on that board, but was on individuals' decisions of taking on more than what they thought they could, and. Making decisions based off that, and then we as council are getting informed after the fact, and we're having to make a split decision on, should we do this, should we do that, so. That's it, Mayor, um.
I I appreciate you elaborating, sir, 'cause you you've gotten into, you were very eloquent in in your speech, so thank you for that. Uh, Councilman Landerman, you're next, sir, and then, uh, Councilman Hammer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, so I'll start with the Infrastructure Advisory Board, I do agree with you on the Infrastructure Advisory Board, Mayor, I think that. That board is important, um, the the feedback I've gotten, um, I I appointed a, uh. Very motivated go-getter for my appointment, and he showed up with a lot of ideas, and they almost never had quorum. Um, and he's been there every time, so, uh, I I'm okay with massaging that, so I mean, maybe there's a, um. There's a point where if you miss so many meetings without an excuse, maybe, you know, you need to be relieved, and and that councilman needs to appoint a new person. Uh, whatever the case may be, we could be creative, but I I'm with you, we should keep that one, but we need to do something with it, because it, right now, it's not working. Um, I I think you all know where I stand on the Sustainability Advisory Board, so.
Thank you, Councilman Hammer.
Yeah, I am never for taking away a citizens' board, I I just feel like, um, they should always have a say in it. But on the backside, I really think we need to, uh, make sure we're coming up with a team that is gonna assemble, and a team that is going to. Provide for for what, um, what's going on, maybe we can share it a little better, but one of my ideas would be, uh. If we could table this for one month, let me meet with the boards, find out some ideas, then maybe, maybe they meet. Quarterly, maybe they meet semi-annually, but I I I I wouldn't be for taking them away completely, if they only meet twice a year. Just with stuff, I mean, I I am okay with that, I'm okay with limiting however many, but I would get the input from the boards. And see if they have any ideas to get more motivated people on there, um, um, I I'm just, I. I hate hearing people, um, losing their voice, and that's something I I'm not gonna be for.
Thank you, I I appreciate that, sir, and and that may be a good compromise, I'm gonna tee it, tee it back off, uh, but definitely. My take is the same as yours, pretty much, I like the public's engagement, I I've said that time and time again. But if we had to choose, I would, I, if I had to split the baby, I would definitely wanna keep that Infrastructure Advisory Board, uh, Deputy Mayor.
So, you know, keeping boards, getting rid of boards, I mean, there was a lot of discussion months and months ago about the Budget Advisory Board, and then at First Budget Workshop, there was one resident here. I've been on council eight months, I've never seen one report from the Infrastructure Advisory Board, so when they do meet, where. So when they do meet, where does that information go? Um, as a council member, I work very hard and put a lot of time and energy and hours into. Working with, you know, meeting different department heads, driving around the city, taking tours of the of the different places around the city, working with the city manager. And finding out the needs like I and then, of course, you know, work one on one with residents, emails, phone calls. And I think that's our duty as council members, um and obviously, in my opinion, these boards aren't functioning the way they're intended. And maybe it is maybe a Samuel's, you know, an annual thing or semi, or an ad hoc as needed. But, you know, that's just, I have a very strong position on it.
That that's a good question, though. Why why haven't the Infrastructure Advisory Board met? Has there been, I understand there's no quorum. But are we to to Councilman Land even's point about massaging it, I I just, you know. We we haven't had that traffic engineer that oversaw the the Infrastructure Advisory Board. In several months, who has taken that responsibility on, how has that um materialized? Those are questions too.
Council doesn't, the IOAB Board doesn't get yelled at by residents for lack of roads, we do. So like if this board is so great and fantastic and performing the way it's, but how come residents aren't barking at their tree? Right, like and how come we're not getting good advice and good information uh relayed to us?
So would you consider tabling this until Councilman Hammer's suggestion?
No, I'm not willing.
Okay, alright, uh Councilman Johnson.
I have two points, Mayor, and I I believe just the Lord dropped the the thought on my mind. Um, one, the Public Works Director starts on Monday. So that's something to consider. Two, why not just combine the boards? We always hear people talk about how we put pipes down when we have roads to fix and we put roads down when we have pipes to fix. Why not combine the two boards and get everybody on the same page, so that way utilities and public works are meeting at the same time with them. With the citizens, getting their feedback, sending that feedback to us, so we can take in their recommendations into consideration.
That may be a good suggestion, I that's not what's on the agenda.
I mean, yeah, just for clarity, that Utilities Advisory Board was killed three years ago.
Sorry, I misspoke, sustainability, that's why I meant, thank you, thank you for correcting, sustainability, cuz they all they all entangles with one another.
So my 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 question is, how many folks on the Sustainability Board, Ma- Madame Therese? And then the same number, the same question for the Infrastructure Advisory Board.
I believe they're both seven.
Seven each?
Yes.
Okay, so you would, seven each would be an even number that you would always want an odd number. If if they're both combined, is that correct?
Well, I would say.
You're saying minimize the.
Yeah, make it seven, nine, something like that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I I I'm tracking this, I'm tracking, okay, um. I think that's a good compromise, um at at the moment, it could come back. I I know where you stand, Deputy Mayor. Councilman Land even.
Well, I think if we make a board with nine members, we're still not gonna get a quorum.
Right, right, no, well, no, he said seven, it'd be seven. It'd be seven.
Well, we can't get a quorum with seven. Alright, well, there's two on the Sustainability Advisory Board that currently show up and I know one on the infrastructure, maybe there's another one, but they can't get a quorum either, so four. Alright, I guess they might be able to get a quorum if all the motivated people show up from both boards.
To your argument, I just had someone relocate and I replaced them at last meeting. So that that was a quick turnaround, but. To what Councilman Hammer's saying, a lot of that responsibility should reflect on us, cuz if we're not actively appointing people, that's our fault. Right? We we have to take some type of responsibility over it as well. Deputy Mayor.
Gentlemen, I'm just trying to figure out how sustainability and infrastructure are jive together. They are two far different things.
Our our whole um low impact development, uh everything that that was all done by Public Works. Um, the language for that, uh stormwater, uh where else can I go, um. That's 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 Public Works, that's infrastructure and that can lead to the waterways and leading to the waterways can. You know, affect the economic business within not just Palm Bay, but Pevara County. You know, it's, look at what just happened, that we just had a presentation. We just had a presentation on um presentation number two and he's talking about runoff into the, you know, into Turkey Creek. So I feel they both go hand in hand, especially with what we just listened to two hours ago, so that's all.
Alright, thank you. So right now. Councilman Land.
Yeah, just in in response to that, and I completely understand your your train of thought and your way of thinking, Councilman Johnson, and it's not that it doesn't make sense. Um, but when you're talking about infrastructure and stormwater, I do understand. How there there are sustainability impacts with that, there are, um but when you're approaching it from an infrastructure standpoint, you're approaching it from. Realistic best practices and sustainability, but my concern is when you start adding um. The type of thought process that comes from a sustainability board, you start adding more. Uh, less best practices and more what you consider just the green initiatives, and that's what I don't want and what I wanna avoid. So I just want a infrastructure board that focuses on infrastructure and I don't wanna start. I infusing a green initiative into the infrastructure board, that that's gonna take it in a bad direction, I think.
So the question still stands, um. The question still stands, do we have no additional speaker cards, Deputy Mayor?
New cards, one from Mister Rob Klimkowski.
Good evening again, um went to look at this item when you guys have your agendas over there, figured the packet would have. An agenda maybe a packet as well online, you guys already archived the meeting, so you actually can't click on the packet right now. You can see the meeting. Other than when public comment happens, of course, but right now, can't see any of the agenda or packet items online, so that's probably an issue. Cuz I can only go over there and get it, but can't look at the items. Um, another thing on advisory boards, are any of them statutorily required? You have to have them here, no uh AHA meetings that are happening for affordable housing or stuff that's required by the state, right? Cuz those could be ones that you would wanna keep most likely, um I think what is it, Pevara County has sixty seven boards? Sixty seven advisory boards and like twenty nine of them are statutorily required under Florida's statute. That being said as well. I put my name in for an advisory board like a year ago, I never got a call, um. How many people right now have people? Asking to be on an advisory board? How many one of the councilmen have somebody has put their name in? That maybe they just decided not to go forward with, cuz that's another question I'd like to know is, you guys say that you aren't appointing people, that's one issue. How many people aren't appointing people because it would be political favor or disfavor? That's another issue, thank you.
Sir, can I ask you, cuz I it's hard to read, where where does that you live, sir?
Palm Bay.
Yeah.
Zamora Street.
Zamora?
Yeah.
He had it on an earlier card.
Yeah, I had it right fast cuz I knew it said like prior to the start of the item and I was.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure we could reach out.
And just for just for clarity, there are statute, you know, required boards, these are not that we're discussing.
Any other speaker cards?
And uh Bill Batten has the card.
Bill Batten, five eighty six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. To blame. IAB for the road bond failure was kinda hurtful to me personally. And the reason I say that is I spent many, many hours attending. The Road Ad Hoc Committee where we set down the initial guidelines for how the road bond was gonna be put into play. What what was gonna be the criteria to be there and then to blame the IAB for a failure project. That I would say for the time that I've lived in the city of Palm Bay going on thirty eight years. I now see more paved roads, I see development in neighborhoods that were. Being avoided because there was no paved roads, I see growth and I saw employment within the city. And then to say, well, the failure is because of IAB, IAB was just a follow up. Committee to kind of watch what was happening within the city. Now, as for its failure, I agree, sometimes there is no quorum, I agree with that statement wholeheartedly. Because I attend these meetings. Not just this one, I'm actively involved in most of the meetings. That's where I get a lot of information, the information that I pick up from these individuals over here that had come to these other meetings. They provide information that I can then use for passing on to other other residents within the city of Palm Bay. So there is there is a gain to the system, right? Under sustainability. The LID input that was implemented by your staff. Lot of that information came from Sustainability Boards, sometimes they don't know what you're asking for, where you really want them to go. I agree, you could probably get by with fewer meetings, but the information that's put out is put out is beneficial. As for not getting a report back after the meetings, I thought that was the whole process, I thought we had staff there that did present minutes. From the meeting back to the council, so if you're not receiving it. I don't know where the downfall is cuz I've gone back and looked at the minutes that came back from the meeting, so I thought you were receiving it also. Alright, so I understand concern as to some meetings are a waste of time, it feels like. But I can say the same thing about city council meetings sometimes too. But I'm not gonna stop coming, just like I'm not gonna stop attending the other ones, because that's a very good. Mechanism for gaining knowledge about my city, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Miller.
Mark Miller, eight ninety Nelson Avenue. For me, it just comes down to one word, it's accountability, right? If you're gonna have these these councils, these committees, they need to show up. If you're appointing a person and they're not showing up. Councilman Land even just said he appointed a guy, he's high energy, he's in there, he's wanting to make a difference, he's wanting to serve, he's wanting to do, that's awesome. But if you've appointed guys and they're not showing up and you're not getting a quorum and you're not getting people to come, then. Is someone calling him up and saying, why are you not showing up? Why aren't you coming to the meetings? Why aren't you participating? Hold your appointee accountable. And if they're not showing up, get get them out. I know even at church, right, we have requirements for folks to serve on the board, if you're not showing up for meetings, guess what? You're not gonna be a board member very long, and so, you know, we've got to have, we've got to drive accountability. I think removing the the citizen input is is a mistake, it's just another censorship of of input. I I think having these committees are important, but I think people have to be held accountable, if they're gonna serve and have a title, they need to show up, put the time in. And um I may regret that later, that statement later, but uh as it stands right now, I think you guys gotta hold people accountable. And uh and drive it, so that's what I'm at.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
Uh Ruth Ruth Coffel.
Ruth Coffel, nine thirty five Devil Street, Southeast. Okay, this is the big problem, notification to citizens on anything. I mean, I have the problem, Pastor Mark says he's got the church, I have it with notifying people about my constitution classes. It is hard to get notifications out to citizens to do anything, even they're like, why didn't I know about this? Well, they don't know where to go, used to be go to newspaper, well, what newspaper? Florida Today, yeah, trash, no, we don't do Florida Today, I don't subscribe to it, I don't care about it, no, not happening. Hometown News, never seen it, don't know, don't know where to go, so we don't know where to go. So at the end of the day, where's the notification? I applied, Therese, here we're gonna go. I sent her an email five years ago and said, how do I get on charter commission? She said I never saw it, unfortunately, there was a miscommunication, she did have it, she didn't see it in time. And I think it's stupid, actually, to um uh each council member assigned two people. If you have an unbalanced council, you're gonna have an unbalanced charter commission. We should have at large recommendations. Notifications, public, I mean, if you're gonna put out the Christmas extravaganza all over the place, let's put out an at large. Need for all these boards and tell this, I mean, I beat up on my citizens all the time, if you're not there, you don't get to witch. You don't get to witch about it, so either you come here and you talk about it or you stop witching. So this is, but if they don't know when, where and how to talk about something, that it's 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 a mute point. This is a problem all over the nation with the internet and everything. Pat doesn't do Facebook, she doesn't do social media, so and social media, quite honestly, can be hacked. And it doesn't get promoted, I don't see half the stuff with going on with the city unless I actively go out to the city. Website and do something about it, so we, it is a big problem, notification, somehow we're gonna have to put postcards out, I don't know what. But somehow or another, we're gonna have to make a bigger effort to notify citizens about what going on around here, thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude the speaker cards, sir?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so this was a discussion, um Deputy Mayor, where where do you wanna go?
Make a motion to dissolve the Sustainability Advisory Board and. Table the Infrastructure Advisory Board until Councilman Hammer can come back with some suggestions. I second it.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Land even. Any further discussion, sir?
No, Mayor. Yes, so I I had a question that might be good, um so we said there's seven members of the Infrastructure Advisory Board. So that would be two at large positions, are at large positions filled on the Infrastructure Advisory Board?
Madame Therese?
I mean, we're not, we're not advertising for it, so my guess is it's. We're only advertising for the Recreation Advisory Board at large currently.
Right, the two at large positions are filled, so there's two vacant positions for city council.
Who's appointments are those?
Is one mine, I I believe.
I think, well, my, one of mine just relocated.
No, one is for Councilman Hammer and Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, mine resigned, I think a month or two ago.
And I still. Yes, sir, still replacing, um. Does that conclude? Your questions, okay, right now I got a motion by Councilor or Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by. Councilman Land even, Councilman Hammer.
Well, I'll jump in, mine resigned because they weren't having quorums, so. So to the point.
I I had no clue that I didn't have one filled, but I will, um like I said, I. If you can give me a table for both of them, give me an opportunity to maybe fill them both up and come up with a great idea. That works for everybody, because I do know there are a couple people on Sustainability Board that are extremely passionate about what they do. And um I would hate to tell Suzanne Connolly that her that her board was was. Was was done, and I know she's incredibly passionate and I know if I tell her, you know, let's get it together and. I I I'm I'm almost positive I can find some people if you just give me, if you if you give me one month.
Okay, so I I right now I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe and it's been seconded by Councilman Land even. I'm gonna call the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Uh, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, um. Get my names together here, sorry, Councilman Hammer.
Nay.
Councilman Land even.
Yeah, yes, aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Nay, motion fails. Okay, we're now on item number five, Mister Morton.
We're not before you tonight, um, considering the twenty twenty-five certification of taxable values fiscal year twenty-six, proposed operating millage rate fiscal year twenty-two-six, proposed debt millage rate, and scheduling dates for budgeting of the public hearings, and I'll have Angelica come up in a minute and talk about the technical data, but, um, I've only been here three months, not even two and a half months, and really digging in, of course, to, to everything, and you got thrown into budget, you know, en masse. And I'm not advocating, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I wasn't educating you and the community. And I hear it already in every council meeting I've been in, fix the roads, fix the ditches, do, do the work. I gave a very strong presentation at the budget hearing in respects to our dilapidated and buildings that are falling apart, age of our equipment, the age of our infrastructure, and the deficits that we have in, in those operational divisions, and it's getting worse, it's not getting better. Um, but what I did say also at the meeting was that it was my strategy, that if we maintain the current millage, that those funds would be used entirely for the purchase of new fire vehicles, which is what the proposed budget you're getting, the community will see as it's doing, every penny of that delta is going towards proposed millage. I get it, we're a nation founded, my kids like to say as a joke, but it's truth, we're founded as, as an anti-tax nation from people who didn't wanna have tax on a breakfast condiment. But in times when it has mattered to the history of this country, when the need is demonstrated and it can be shown, people have also risen to the occasion and funded what needs to get done. I don't believe in debt, and I think I've made that clear. Bonds are not financing their municipal debt. Very rarely is there a case to be made, in my judgment, for bonds, maybe utilities is the only real exception, there might be some others, and those because those are revenue generated. So we have a source of payback from users, not necessarily, uh, as a tax, we don't have to get into the debate tonight on taxes versus fees or charges for service. But what we want to demonstrate tonight is just the philosophy as I see it, as the city manager when I review the budget. So we're talking about, and we got the criticism, which is fair, why do we zero one on a house value? So instead of using balanced value, we used, we used a three hundred thousand dollar house as, as an assessed value, and you can carry the table on the current fiscal year, the millage rate, if we extend that millage rate, we see a reduction in the go-road bonds. And, and on that three hundred thousand dollar house taxable, you can see the bylines there, which I can't read, well, if I put my glasses on, I can read them. The new taxable value assumes a three percent cap from Save Our Homes, which most folks have that are, that are vested in this argument. The additional funding, of course, on top of that, we also have the three percent, um, uh, cap that the city has on the, um, cap rate. So we're starting from two deficits. Um, but it's, it, it, it annualizes to an increase of twelve dollars and fifty-four cents per year, not per month, per year, for the investment in two fire trucks, and what, I have an I S O table. And when I was talking with staff today, and just being colloquial, I said, we have a choice, right, to, to decide to invest in our community and public safety and the assets and resources we need, or we can invest in an insurance company based out of New York and send our premiums up there. And so these tables are showing the delta, now, I do have the fire chief here to provide some contextual evidence on I S O rating, what it does to your homeowner's insurance. They only count a discount down to a level five, many areas of the city are better than level five, I don't wanna mislead the conversation. Also, and, and the chief's gonna come up and explain the particulars behind that, but also when we talk about economic development, we talk about taking this plan, which is in motion, we heard about the compound a couple weeks back, we've met, we continue to meet with businesses, we hear what the chamber's doing. We're putting strategies in place through Economic Development Department to actually make progress on, on, on the conversations we've been having as a community, something I talked about in my interview coming here. But another, another consideration that businesses make is what is their total cost of service? It's not just their entry point into our city in terms of permitting and how we're being responsive, have we dealt with our issues, can we, can we address timelines? But it's, it's costs, it's fixed costs, it's leased, it's triple net, it's, it's M and O, it's staffing, it's housing for the employees, and so, so it impacts businesses in two ways, additional housing costs and the I S O costs that businesses, commercial operations, manufacturing operations bear significantly a higher delta. So it also becomes a barrier to economic development. Again, I'm sharing facts and information, I don't, please don't mistake it, I feel like I'm advocating, but I don't think I'd be doing my job if I didn't bring up a hard conversation tonight about the deficit of infrastructure, the importance of funding critical infrastructure, um, and a way we can approach it without taking on debt, because if we take on debt, we're tripping over a dollar to pick up a dime, is, is the way I like to say it, we literally are tripping over the dollar to go to pick up ten cents off the ground, so. I wanted to just give you my perspective as I approach this budget, what, what I intend to try to accomplish in the next couple of years with catching up with infrastructure. Um, you know, securing our roads and get, making order out of road projects, police, fire, the core elements of public safety. And we got guys in the Public Works team, I gave out service awards this morning, they've been here twenty-five years, twenty-three years, twenty-two years. It's not ideal, but they don't mind driving twenty-four-year-old pickup trucks, twenty-five-year-old pickup trucks, twenty-seven-year-old pickup trucks, yes, we have those in every truck, that we're sending our guys out to work with every day. They're making do with the tools, right, they are, and they're not complaining every day about it. Uh, but there's some things that we can't make do with, we can't make do with a twenty-five-year-old fire engine, in my opinion, that, that, that's not okay, if, if, uh, uh, you know, and so we need to address the comprehensive infrastructure in the city, which is gonna include that equipment to serve our public works for, folks that drive out and stand on the side of the roads and stand in the meetings and, 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 and do all those things that also are a risk and serve this community. But tonight I'm here to talk about the delta, what I told the community I would do with the proposed delta difference in the council in, in a budget. And Chief, did you wanna elaborate anything on I S O, did we cover it? Did you wanna elaborate on anything on the I S O, did we cover it, just fine? Please, come on up, sir, on the mic, see.
Um, a couple things, I think there needs to be some clarity on what, there needs to be some clarity on when it comes to the I S O rating and how that affects the delivery of service. First off, the fire department is a lot more complex than the little red trucks going out to fires and motor vehicle accidents and things like that. There's standards that we meet, there's standards we have to meet, there's standards that are done for the purpose of getting people, getting fire trucks, getting emergency medical vehicles to a certain location for a certain type of incident within a certain time period. And when that truck gets on scene, that deployment model also includes the amount of training, the type of training, what's in that truck, and how that truck ac- actually impacts to the overall outcome of the incident that they were sent to. So what you're seeing here is like it says here, that, that, this is the cost of the homeowners for a lack of insure, or a lack of a good fire department. Right now, there's, from what we're, our rough estimates, we're trying to fine tune this. This city right now has approximately one thousand plus homes, not counting businesses. And a couple of those businesses would be the two new Publixes brought into the city, the upcoming Walmart, uh, marketplace, and those, out in those areas that are classified currently at a level ten fire protection. The absolute worst fire protection rating you can get. What is that doing for the homeowners out there? That shows you right there the typical cost of fire insurance for having those homes, those businesses that are currently in, within the city limits, out there in those areas. In addition to that, when you turn around, you look at that number and you look at a business, those, those premium numbers are for a homeowner. Businesses usually see that over ten thousand dollars plus, depending on the type of business, the square footage, what is the fire load inside of that? Those all play into what's going on here. So in order to get it to where the, the taxpayers are getting the also, the benefit of a proper fire protection service, and at the same time seeing the reduction in their fire insurance tax is all what we're going to do here, is what this whole thing is about, the fire department. In order for these things to happen, you have to be within five miles of the fire station to get that rating. Right now, we have the vast part of the south end of the city and the most of the west end of the city that do not have a fire station within five miles. So they're paying the absolute most in fire protection. Now, I can't tell you, I've heard a couple of numbers, and I would have to ask somebody to clarify this for me, but leaving the tax rate at what it's currently at, I believe, I've heard between thirty, thirty-two dollars, I'm not sure what that is, uh, would, would be what the increase would be. When you look at people that live in these areas, and you just take them from a ten, and if we just went to a two for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, that's how many thousands of dollars saved in a year. And how much are we looking to make the tax impact, the tax increase? A two-digit number? I think it's well worth it. Plus, what that does is this also helps us get trucks on the road that actually do the job. Not the job of what the fire service was twenty-five years ago. So there's a lot that goes into delivering a fire and emergency medical services program. It's not just about a bunch of firefighters jumping on the red truck and going out to fight the fire and coming back. There's a lot of complexity, complexities involved in this, there's been a lot of neglect of the fire department over the years. Past administrations, past councils, they've always kicked the can down the road. And now we're in a position to where that on a good day, I have a spare truck if I need it. There's days where we've not had spare trucks, when we've had trucks broken down. So what this is about is not only to get the fire department where it should be, but to provide the homeowners the level of protection they should have, and when this is done correctly, you can see some of the examples there of the cost savings, and it's a lot more in the cost savings than it is for the tax increase. If there's any questions?
I just wanna close out to say two things, just so I can be very clear with everyone listening in the community. We are looking at the other strategies that go into this, we're looking at inner local agreements and all those wonderful things that help stretch resources, right, that's not gonna solve this, this issue. And then when everyone sees proposed budget, which should, should be coming out pretty quick, proposing these two fire agents that are consumed if, if, you know, depending on, on, on the cap conversation with the community wishes to do, and then I have two additional fire trucks attributed to the general fund, because the core philosophy around the budget has been, and people will see, it's public safety and fire, it's public safety and police, it's public safety and public works, and it's securing and trying to shore up our, our falling apart assets, projects at, at the community centers, buildings that are community access and uses for events and gatherings and funerals and birthday parties and things, you know, again, twenty years of deferred maintenance, so it is a tight budget. And we're really trying to invest back and, and, and stop some of the, uh, the hemorrhaging on, on throwing good money after bad, and so that was all, all I wanted to clo- close with, and of course, it's, it's the public's decision, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Are there any questions, gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Any speaker cards?
Bill, Bill Baden.
Bill Baden, five eighty-six Ocean Spray Street, Southwest. First, I'd like to say what a great job the workshop was. I know there was not a lot of citizens in the audience, but for the information that I got, I'm saying this to the council, I already called your staff and told them what a great job I thought they did. I'm telling you, that, and I've been attending this for thirty, thirty-seven years now. That was the most informative workshop on the budget that I've ever attended. And gave me a great, gave me a lot of input for making decisions. So first of all, I just wanna say, good job on what they did, and good job on your workshop, that was, that was good. What, what decision you make now, I'll live with as long as we don't exceed the, uh, a millage rate of ten, but in that millage rate of ten, I don't wanna see an increase in police and a separate item, I don't wanna see an increase in, in police or fire in it, or for stormwater. At all the tax you paid, you bring that up to where you do not exceed your ti- millage of ten. I'd be, don't wanna see it, but I would be comfortable and understanding with that, because that's what you have to govern under. That being said, I just wanted to say, what a good job your staff did at that workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards, De- Deputy Mayor?
Alan Miles.
Dr. Alan Miles, three fifty Garvey Road, Southwest. I had a whole bunch of stuff put together, but I guess my lack of understanding about new taxes, it's freezing in here, um, i- is that if you go back that fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years ago, the average house cost a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. And if you took your homestead exemption out of it, and the eighty percent, uh, tax, uh, assessment, you, you're probably only paying for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house. Now, the average house is three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. You take out the same eighty percent and twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars homestead exemption, and now you still have a three hundred thousand dollar. So the difference between a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house and a three hundred thousand dollar house now, means your taxes are three times more. So how come if we're making three times more taxes now, we can't afford a fire engine? Uh, or a police car? Or, or why do the thousand people that live fifteen miles or ten miles down Babcock Street want us to pay for them to have a fire station? Or the people that live out by a high school off, uh, the end of, uh, Malabar, which is another ten miles from here, or I ninety-five, want us to pay for them to have a police station and a fire station? Why didn't the builders, and why didn't you guys put that into the, into the plots and make them do that back then? So now what do you have? You have a Publix, but you don't have anything else, you don't even have land to do it. Last time I heard, they were gonna buy land down the end of Babcock Street, and it didn't have city water. So they couldn't even buy the property to do that. So that, that's my thoughts, my thoughts are we don't need the tax increase because it's already been increased three times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Daubro.
Pat Daubro, four ten George's Avenue, Northeast. President Trump is dropping taxes. Why are we raising taxes? There was a fact that came out that the majority of our schools have over fifty percent to seventy-five percent disadvantaged students. So if we have that many disadvantaged students, that means we have that many disadvantaged families. So how are we going to sell this increase in taxes when they really can't afford it? We have seniors, majority of seniors in this city living on social security or whatever, and how are they going to pay in increasing taxes? I agree, we need more money. But we need to find other ways to get the money. So the other concern is, why do we have so many students that are disadvantaged? Do we really have a city that's thriving or not?
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mark, Mark Miller.
You know, the reason other than it is kinda chilly, I think I'm sitting underneath the vent. All right, Mark Miller, ninety-eight Nelson Avenue, what, what I just heard is you want a hundred percent of the citizens of Palm Bay to pay for all the folks buying these new expensive homes down there so they can save thousands on their life, on their insurance. I just think that's wrong. I think that, uh, all in all is, I'm, I'm not gonna save any money on my insurance, because somebody thirty miles away has a new fire truck, right, but you want me to pay for it. And so, if I'm interpreting the message correctly. But, um, you know, I, I, I would say that, yeah, Palm Bay isn't a world of hurt. Looking backwards, maybe we can learn a little from it. And what are we gonna do going forward? We got a lot of new homes coming, we got a lot of new building going, we got a lot of stuff going on. Where, where was the budget? Where's, where's the passing on the impact fees to, to all the new folks that are coming in? Where's, where's that vision and that plan? How, how are we so short? It, it just absolutely blows my mind and reeks of incompetence or corruption, right? I, I just don't understand how we could be this far behind. Um, a- a- and none of this is new, I know you guys are new, and each year or every couple of years, people rotate out, but, uh, you know, going to more and more taxes, just like the gentleman said, I mean, the whole prices are going way up, taxes are going up, and, and, um, it just, it, it just doesn't make sense to me. If we do have to go that route, and that is the vote today, I, I would just really encourage, what are the other things that were looked at, right? To, to get money? That, the Doge thing, or whatever else, efficiency, well, what are some of the other things that we looked at? Right? Uh, and maybe you've already shared that, and I just didn't know. But I would love to hear before a yes vote, what else have, have we done to get the money? Right, to, to get the money from other areas to, to, you know, what else has been done before just, hey, just increase taxes, right? Just throw a few more bucks, that's only twenty-four dollars a person, what difference does it make? It's insignificant. No, it is significant, especially when there are a bunch of people out there, you know, I mean, we've had five hundred families in less than two hours that were starving, right? Think of all the food banks and all the issues that are going on, we shouldn't have that in this city. Man. And so I, I just really think that lack of vision is, is where we are. And, and I think establishing that vision and being able to budget for it with any new And, and I think establishing that vision and being able to budget for it with any new folks coming in and that whole development of that Parkway, they need to pay for their own. I don't need to pay for that.
Thank you, um, Mr. Morton.
Just, just wanted to answer those questions, just since they're great. And, um, you know, we are in the state of Florida, and Florida limits everything we do. You saw it tonight with the plat restrictions. There's a limit to what we can collect in impact fees. And this council just raised the impact fees on fire, I think, a year ago, and just asked us at the last budget workshop that you were at to max those fees out to the maximum allowable interstate statute. So we're taking those steps. We're not just saying you're, everybody residents. Fire is one of those things that's system wide. You know, I used this example in the last meeting. They're paying for you as much as you're paying for them. Fire trucks don't live in one place and never go to any other part of the city. It's to serve our entire community, no matter where you're at, whether on the road, whether in your home, whether you're out of business. Um, and then just the, the, the fallacy that we make sometimes from a budget perspective, we're not the federal government, we cannot deficit spend. So it's great that the federal government's doing a lot of Doge efficiency. We're not sending money to Uganda to pay for sex change operations. We're not funding research on pit, I'm being serious, I'm being sarcastic, right? So we don't have the deficit spending capability. When we do, it comes to the public, those rare instances where we do bonds. We're, we're looking at our efficiencies every day. We're not filling positions that are open right now. We're not hiring new positions. When I say not hire, filling positions, I want to be very clear, there's some we've identified we don't need to fill. We haven't created any new FTEs in the budget, right? So we're trying to do that heavy lifting. It's gonna take time. I don't know if there's a cut. I think I said this also during the interview, you're never gonna cut your way to where we need to be. That's just where I'm at, um, from my read of the city. But again, just, just that clarity between federal budget and, and state budget, and then down to the lower level of the city budget. And we're handicapped on so many new revenues, what the state will let us do. And as you were paying attention, the state is looking, and it did this year, take away additional revenue shares, take away additional funding opportunities. So it looks great from the governor's level, but it throws the burden back on the local communities at the same time they're taking our decision making away. So that, that's the objective reality we struggle with. Again, not trying to convince you, I wanted to try to just, um, hopefully honestly answer your question.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Ruth Coffold.
Ruth Coffold, nine thirty-five of the street. All right, so everything we just talked about, what's the, what's the bottom line? The bottom line is, you can't do any of that until we fix the roads and we have to fix the infrastructure and the utilities. Just like we said, can't buy this because there's no water on it. Can't buy that because nothing is fixed, nothing is done. I'm not even seeing it. I, I'm not even seeing the status report. I want to see it. I'm a project manager. I want to see a status report from all my departments about what's going on, and I want to know where to find that. This chart and all the charts that I've seen, again, what is the root cause? What is the original intent before we can move forward with any goals whatsoever? Cannot do anything without all these roads and utilities. And we will not be able to, it doesn't matter if we have any more fire departments or police departments, as the mayor promised in his first term, uh, because they can't get anywhere. They won't be able to get any, have you watched a, uh, ambulance try to get through traffic on Malabar Road? It's scary, very scary. And, and Palm Bay Road as well. So, um, and what, what bothers me, and, you know, I can add, you know, so how many people have entered the city since twenty twenty? Where's that revenue? Where's that money? You know where it is? It's in the apartment buildings that were built between that time and we're not tracking the vacancies. We're not tracking them at all. I've asked for that many times. Where is it? Where's the tracking on these, uh, apartment buildings? Are they vacant? Or how many people are living in them? I watched the one over off of, um, Minton, near, uh, Norfolk Parkway. I saw it sit vacant for months after it was built. They just now put open signs there. Months. What are they doing with it? Besides the fact that they're built by sticks? Good one, good hurricane comes by, it'll smack the crap out of that thing. Who's gonna be responsible for those people that get hurt? Who's gonna be responsible for all that? Stop building right now. Just put a hold on all the building projects. What happened to the project? Cancel all projects without a start date after, you know, one, one twenty-five, January. I heard that in this council, that we're, we're not gonna do anything else until we got these things fixed. What happened to that? Where'd that statement go? We need to stop doing stuff so that we can get what we need done first. All right? So why isn't Palm Bay pushing back on Tallahassee? Because you want to know why? When I was in the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the attorneys said to me, well, you don't want to piss off Tallahassee. I do. I, they don't live here. We live here. Thank you.
Ma'am, y- you mentioned Minton and where exactly?
Norfolk Parkway.
That's West Melbourne.
Oh.
The Norfolk Parkway across from Sawgrass.
Okay.
So the, the, they're on the, over, near the overpass for ninety-five. They just put signs out for, now they're open.
Okay, I, I was thinking it was in Palm Bay, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. But what I'm saying is that's one example.
Yes, ma'am. I got. I just had to make a visual when you said Minton, I'm trying to think of where. Any other speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Okay. Uh, do you have any questions, council members, staff at this point?
I, I just.
I've got Councilman Johnson first, and then Councilman Hammer.
Yes, mayor. As everybody's been speaking, everything's been coming to me quickly, um. And I'm looking, I'm looking over towards, uh, Mr. Weinberg and Mr. Baden in regards to the recollection of the past decade or so, um. Back ten years ago or so, council was consistently raising the cap, cap because they were being advised, you know, we have to, we have these emergency needs here, we have these emergencies needs there. Um, fast forward, Councilman Bailey, um, provided the suggestion of, you know, three percent cap to try to put a limit on, um, raising the millage rate. Fast forward, since I was on council in twenty eighteen up till now, majority of the time, we went over the millage rate to address emergency needs. So the fact that, I'm, I'm, I'm with you Pastor, um, Miller. You're looking at, you know, we're constantly raising the millage rate, or we're constantly busting the cap, however you want to phrase it. Um, but that threshold's not being closed, there's, there's a miscon- there's a misconnection there. And that's where numbers don't lie. So to your point, mayor, when you came, you ran for transparency speaking on the, it wasn't operational audit, it was a different term. But you know what I'm talking about. At that time, I couldn't see what you were speaking on, but now I see it with a lot more clarity, like, when you have those numbers, you can see, okay, this isn't working. Okay, miss, let's move this funding over here. Or that's not working, let's move this funding over here. So that's why I've been harping on zero-based budgeting, or we were on the same page with the inspector general last year, mayor. Um, or operational audits, you could see where the holes are in regards to our government or where the miscommunication is within our government. So I'm fine with, at this time. I, I, and that's a whole nother thing. I'm glad it was brought up in regards to the state. Insurance companies are getting away with whatever they want because majority of the state legislators are lawyers. And if they're not lawyers, then they're getting fed the legislation, and they're just putting their name on it to co-sponsor it. So that's a whole nother topic, but I can't the cap or, I mean, you know, raise the millage rate without showing numbers of to justify it, really, is where I'm at. Because I've been part of council of the vote of raising the cap multiple times, and we're still being told, oh, we're short here, we're short there. Okay, well, we are just the legislative body to approve. We're not the stewards in per se of handling the day-to-day nine to five of the, of the funds. So I, I think that's something, and I, I appreciate Mr. Morton on it, but I think really just getting down to the weeds of things to uproot what we need to uproot. And just go from there, mayor. So I, I'm conflicted, but at the same time, I'm just going based off the history of the past and seeing where we are now because we've been raising the rate, raising the rate, and still have all these issues. I don't think it's on council on that end, other than having information or, um, partial information and making movements off of that, so that's all, mayor.
Thank you, um, Councilman Hammer?
Yeah, I'm gonna give two sides of this. As Mike Hammer, citizen of Palm Bay, I would be one hundred percent for spending one dollar a month to provide fire trucks and better service to my community. As Councilman Hammer, I sat there for fourteen months talking about how our taxes are too high. Um, I can't in good faith go up on my millage rate. Um, if there's an option to keep it to where homeowners pay nothing more, I would entertain that, but, um, I'm, I'm gonna be on my word. And I think our, our millage rate here is a little high, and if we can, uh, if we can still come up with what we need and adjust our millage rate, um, I'd be for that. But I just spent fourteen months talking about how, how, uh, we need to lower taxes, and I can't sit here on my first time being on here raising taxes. I, I just, I, I, that's, that's me as a person, and, um, I know a lot more now. And, um, I was put up here by the community, not by me, Mike Hammer. Um, and I've had so many people reach out to me about raising this and raising this and raising this, and, um, I would be okay with if we can make it to where they don't pay anything more, but I, I, I can't be behind raising it.
So I think at the last budget workshop, we, we talked about keeping the same millage rate up as last year. Is that, is that correct? Has that changed, Mr. Morton?
That's correct. No, it has not changed.
Okay, so this, and you, we gave you direction to build your budget around the, that millage rate, is that correct?
Correct, maintaining the current millage rate, not increasing it.
Not increasing.
Does result in a small tax increase, yes.
Okay.
Or a tax increase.
And, and do you have a figure on that, just so that I'm understanding?
A figure in terms of what? The difference?
Yes. Raising, raising the, not raising the millage rate, but keeping it the same.
On a three hundred thousand dollar house, it's about a twelve dollar difference, is what they showed in the presentation earlier.
Per, per year?
Per year.
Twelve, per, oh, I, I see where the discrepancy is. Okay, um, Councilman or Deputy Mayor Jaffe, and then Councilman Land?
Right. So obviously, we all, we all live in Palm Bay. Me personally, I'm a fiscal conservative. I don't want to pay more taxes than I need to. Um, I'm also a realist. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I've spent an incredible amount of time, probably spent fifteen hours at, at City Hall this week alone, and, and other departments, and there, there are needs everywhere. We've experienced extreme inflation over the last several years, and costs of goods have gone up dramatically, and, and other things have not followed suit, impact fees haven't followed suit. And, uh, you know, back in the nineties, we've had incredible annexation into the city of Palm Bay that has created this urban sprawl that we are suffering from now. You have some streets in Palm Bay with one or two houses, and those streets are brand-new paved. Why are those, why are those roads paved? Those, that's terrible, terrible things that should have happened. Those, those roads should have been sixty, seventy percent built out before those roads were paved. Um, so to your point of incompetence, Pastor Miller, I agree. It's why I decided to run for council. I know I bring a lot of controversial things to, to the dais, but at the end of the day, I'm far from incompetent. What we're doing tonight is we're going to advertise a millage rate, which can be lowered. We still have runway left over the next couple of months. But just advertising the millage rate based on the staff recommendation of six point seven three three nine does not mean that's what we're gonna settle on, um, in September. It's just giving us the leeway to continue the budget season, to let Mr. Morton, his staff, continue to massage the budget and find continued cuts. And worth, uh, residents are still gonna be able to have input, and the council will make a firm decision at a later date. But right now, we set the rate higher, we give ourselves that ability for success while still working on a goal and a function of trying to get that millage rate lower. At least that is, that is my intention. So with that, I'll pass.
Councilman Land?
Thank you, mayor. So I hate taxes, um, and I particularly hate property taxes. I've said this multiple times, I've been on social media about it. Property taxes are the most evil form of taxation because you can never fully own your property if you always have to pay rent to the government. Uh, and it was mentioned about pushing back on Tallahassee. Not only do I push back on Tallahassee, I'm currently working with Tallahassee to find viable, reasonable alternatives, uh, to property taxes. But we were only elected about six months ago. The past budget season had already been approved. Uh, I recognize that to, to fix Palm Bay, we needed drastic action, and we had to almost rebuild the city from the ground up, from a government perspective. And so that's why I did what I did six months ago and made the motion to relieve the city manager. And I ended up getting exactly what I wanted in, in our current city manager, Mr. Morton. Uh, but that didn't come right away. It was a tumultuous process. Uh, we had a temporary city manager who I think did a great job, um, bringing back a great budgeting process, teaching a lot about budgets. That's why we brought Scott Morgan on to teach budgeting. But by the time Mr. Morgan got here, we were already far into a budgeting cycle. Um, he is catching up at a phenomenal rate. But he's asking us to give him one year to allow him to catch public safety up. Uh, and once we can move forward with that, he's gonna be here for a year by the time we get into the next budget cycle. I believe to some of the other points that were brought up, that in some perspectives, in his own way, he's gonna Doge the city. We're gonna be much more efficient. Um, I'm not going to vote to raise taxes again next year, or to even keep the millage rate, um, the same next year in a way that would raise taxes. But I'm going to trust Mr. Morton one year, and I'm going to give him, um, to keep the millage rate the same and use that slight increase if, if we have any to pay for the new fire trucks. Next year, if he comes back and says, well, we've got a new emergency, I'm not gonna be as amiable. But with it being his first year, and he's got a plan, and he's doing a phenomenal job, and he's earned our trust, I'm gonna trust him on this one, and then we're gonna reevaluate next year.
Thank you, I, and I'll, I'll weigh in. Um, I'm for keeping the millage rate the same. We talk about people that live in different places within the city. When it comes to preserving the life of someone, that's what we're questioning up here. And, uh, to maintain the same millage rate that we paid last year, I think is, is an awesome tool that we can give our new city manager the opportunity to restore what has been neglected for a very long time. And yes, I do agree with increasing our public safety, and that's an ever daunting task. To equip our police today, it's thousands of dollars more because of laptops, their outfits, their weapons, uh, and that all costs. But each and every member on this dais, raise their right hand to protect the sanctity of life. And reducing our response times is critical, not only to each and every citizen, but to our public safety individuals. Um, I will say this, I've been the direct benefit of a quick response time for my parents and myself back in twenty twenty. Um, and I can tell you that when the seconds count, we're not counting anything else, but we can possibly lose a life. And so I am for setting this at the same millage rate as last year, uh, perhaps for different reasons than the individuals on this dais. But this city, as Deputy Mayor Eldrick only put it, back in the nineties, huge sprawl. You wouldn't want to build a city like this, right? Because what you should do is have the infrastructure, meaning water, sewer, the whole nine, and then build from there and build it out. But it, it is what it is. This is, these are the cards we've been dealt with. And to your argument, I have voted to maintain that millage rate before at seven point five nine five. Today, I will vote to maintain the six point seven three three nine millage rate. So that is the adverse effect of the three percent cap. And I'm glad that Master Chief Batten, and yes, I do call him Master Chief because I believe he rates that, uh, title, even though he's a senior chief. And I'll tell you, he touched a little bit on what the law is. A millage of ten. Just a few short years ago, when you were on this dais, before any one of us came on, the millage rate, as the chart was previously shown, was the The mileage rate as the chart was previously shown was eight. And no public safety strides were made compared to the seven point five nine five. I wanna highlight that. In my opinion. To increase our public safety today. To set that mileage rate at seven point seven three three nine. It may be able to save a life. And I'm willing to set that at that time. Deputy Mayor, I understand you're right on point. Have them continue to massage it, but I am for setting that mileage rate which is less or. Less than the seven point five nine five before, which is the same as we set last year. So those are my, my thoughts, um. There aren't any additional speaker cards, so I'll need a motion to. To authorize, okay, you can, you can ask your question. But the motion's gotta authorize the city manager to advertise, right? Twenty twenty six, our operating mileage rate of six point seven three three nine. Uh, Councilman Ham.
If this passes tonight, that means it, it gives, um, city manager and staff. Leeway to try to get it back down. And we still get to vote on it again at the end, correct?
You're setting the high watermark tonight. Um, I mean, I can go, you know, cut, cut a fire truck out of the budget, really, that's, that's. And, and, and I'm not being dramatic, if that's kind of where we're at, or we can look for little cuts, but we're gonna have to total something pretty big. You know, million seventeen, million, three million. Uh, and there's just, there's no new vehicles being purchased really for almost any department, there's no capital equipment, I'm just telling you where we're at, so I, I. I can start looking at bringing you in options to cut operations, close down facilities, um.
So I.
Put a hiring freeze on, I mean, I'll, I'll bring back, again, no drama, just if we need to raise a certain number. Um, and you give me a, 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 a number, you're saying, hey, go try to target this number, I'll bring back a whole bunch of, and it won't be. It won't be monument strategy options, it'll be here's a bunch of options, we're trying to reach a certain number, you guys can direct us on what you wanna see get removed from the budget.
So if our fire impact fees go up, will that affect this?
Over time, yes, over time. We still, you know, part of the strategy on the fire impact fees is, as you guys know, we've got the need for. The aging fire stations that are non-functional, falling apart, we've got need for three additional fire stations, so. You know, you've got a twenty million dollar unfunded liability in capital for fire stations coming online in twenty twenty seven, so, you know, we. Yeah. So, so the, the, the needs until we catch up, until we grow business, um, are gonna continue to grow.
Take it.
So.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty.
I've got a motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion, uh, by Deputy Mayor Jaffe, seconded by Councilman Landman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Passes unanimous.
No, 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 nay.
Uh, four, one.
Mayor, I'll make.
Passes four, one.
I'll make a motion, authorize the city manager to advertise, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty six. Proposed operating mileage rate of up to six point seven three three nine. And to authorize the city manager to advertise the fiscal year twenty twenty six proposed that voted debt mileage rate of point nine nine three. It's got to the first public hearing date for Wednesday, September tenth. Twenty twenty five at six P M and the second public hearing date for Wednesday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at six P M.
I got a motion by Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Land. Any, any, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to two. We. We are now on, uh, council reports, Councilman Land.
All right, thank you, Mayor, um, so first off. We said something earlier about, uh, recognizing one religion over the other, I'm just gonna say I, I proclaim Christ is king and to me, he's above all others, but. That's a personal comment. Uh, so on that, uh, back to business, so I wanna bring up something tonight. Uh, it was an idea I've had, I've, I've ran it by, I've talked a lot with the city manager about it, I've ran it by legal to make sure we, we were clear on that. You know, when we ran, I ran on, actually, I actually ran on public safety second. Because to me, the, the most I've heard from the community in the campaign and still to, to this day is infrastructure. Uh, there's a lot that's encompassed in infrastructure. Since we've been elected, we've made some strides, um, some little strides here with utilities, with some intersections and things. Um, and then our TPO representatives are doing an amazing job, but that's all gonna take a lot of time and focus on certain areas. Uh, so what I wanna ask for consensus tonight, gentlemen, is I want to reevaluate. How we're spending the roughly fifty million dollars that we have left in the go roads budget. Uh, I don't believe that just. Uh, paving fifty million dollars worth of road until we run out and then calling it a day and, and not completing. Uh, all the roads anyways, because of, we're, we're very much in the deficit on that. Um, I just don't think that's the, the best use of the go roads funds. I think if we could remaneuver that money to some major, um, projects, particularly on Malabar Road. That that would be what the voters voted for us to do and it would be just a much better use of that funding. We, we particularly have some critical needs near the I ninety five interchange. Um, some safety stuff and then widening that road and that's all gonna be very expensive projects that we cannot do with our budget. Future budgets can address road pavings, but future budgets cannot address widening Malabar Road. So I wanted to bring that up and see if you were interested.
Well, that, that's a good question, I think legally, I, we should ask our attorney because, uh. When folks vote on something, it, it's gotta be whatever it, they're voting on, we just can't switch in midstream, so. I wanted to get counsel from our city attorney.
Which roads projects we do, that's always been a council initiative. The actual bond doesn't say, you know, any specific roads. It does provide that it has to be roadways that is in, uh, Palm Bay or some pertinent, uh, structures, but it doesn't list the roads. That's always been constant, uh, determination.
Okay, so I, I would give you a thumbs up to look at that.
I support it, Councilman Lang.
Alright, thank you, that's all for me.
Okay, so I've got, we've got four, four yeses, you wanted to weigh in.
Well, my, I'm a yes, but just incorporate with the new public works director.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, that's all.
I think that, that's a given, so. Yeah. I guess there's a point of clarification. So the way I understand that and to honor the spirit and intent of what I'm hearing, is we would not. I don't know if anything's in the works, Christine could probably answer that, we would pause, like we suggest, we pause anything that's not bid or not constructed. Go roads, anything we don't have to fund at the moment, things we can stop. While we evaluate the next phase, I don't wanna go spend ten, five, whatever, I don't spend anything, right? So is that the direction that council's comfortable with, there's something that we're not contractually obligated to, we're, we're gonna stop everything while we do this evaluation and report back to council.
I just need to know, there's some phases that have had the stormwater crossings done and like temporary asphalt patches and those. Those areas aren't paved, so.
I, no, I'm great, I just wanna stop, that was my intent, that's what I understood, we'll stop everything, we'll come back and report. Am I hearing that correctly?
I'm just saying, I don't know if we stop the areas that have, have the road crossings done and temporary asphalt in place, like just really analyze that. Is all I'm suggesting.
I think just analyzing it, cause if you have several projects already about the turnkey. Um, that, that's an area of concern, but he wants to reevaluate how the remainder could be addressed.
Okay, well, thank you.
That, that's what I understood.
Yeah, so basically, anything that, that's not, you know, that's in the chute, that hasn't been started, we freeze that, but yeah, if it's been started already. Even if that means just a little bit, then continue, finish the project, but anything that's in the chute that hasn't been started yet, we freeze it and. Until we get a better evaluation. And.
Is that, is that clear? Cause I'm, I'm looking at Christine at, at the same time. Come on, come on up, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to confirm, please, you mean if we haven't actually advertised it for bid, we're holding. We have them already under design, but that's not what you're talking about, if we haven't actually advertised it for bid, you want us to pause on it, correct?
Well, where, where, I guess where the projects are, it, it's gotta be. It just can't be blanked, that's, that's how I look at it, right, cause we have a, a public works director that's already been in touch with you. That's already came to visit our, our city, so my concern is I'm already putting handcuffs on him. I would prefer to see him work with Councilman Landman at that point, so I don't wanna stop anything. Uh, that unless that public works director is aware and is in agreement with it. So that, that's where I would be at, um, because. I, I'd rather have him make that determination with our city manager. Does that, in other words, I don't wanna put any handcuffs on him or our city manager at this point.
I think the director was if we're launched, we keep moving, no new projects advertised or bid, we do the complete evaluation.
No new projects advertised, understood.
We'll come back with a strategy within thirty days or so with the new public work director starting and how we're gonna approach it, so we have a timeline, so it doesn't disappear into the void. We communicate that and we'll work on the timeline, I think is, is how we'll approach that, that's okay.
All right, sir.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Thank you, thank you, Christine. Okay, does that conclude your report, sir? All right, Councilman Hammer.
All right, uh, first, I'd like to make a commitment to this council that we have up here. Um, that I am going to reach out to the, to the, to the committees. And I am gonna work hard at getting them staffed and coming up with a good report for something moving forward. And if we can't do that, I will be the one to bring the item. That, uh, that Councilman Jaffe brought up, myself. Um, secondly, during our TPO meeting, something that I've spoke about to. Our council, uh, many, many times was the traffic at Veterans Park and the pedestrian crossing. I just wanna bring the fact that. That pedestrian crossing there is the worst in Brevard County. According to our TPO, there is a twelve percent yield rate. That means twelve percent of drivers that pass by there yield twelve percent. So when. That's, that's something I'm, I'm really passionate about, if we can. Do something about that area, that's something that's. It's on the radar even at TPO, so. Um. Another thing that was brought up to me was, uh, when we do our fire stations in the future. Um, there's a H B seven ninety one, if we can incorporate into our fire stations for baby boxes. Um, just one in the city would. It's, uh, something somebody brought up to me, gave me some, some, uh, some legislation that's been passed for it and whatnot and, um. I do want to say, uh, over the, over the past month, the couple, or a week ago, we lost a person in public works. It was spoken about, uh, last week. Um. You know, being from public works, it means a lot to me, I was out there with the guys both days, Monday and Tuesday. Um, we had prayer, we had reflection. And, um, I just want to give my sympathy and my condolences to the family and. Um, he was a great man and he will definitely be missed by a lot of people out there. And lastly, uh, um, today's my dad's birthday, um, seven months ago, uh, we found out he had cancer. And, uh, Tuesday, he got to ring the bell that he's cancer free. His strength, getting through this, I've. It makes me a better man and, and I want to say I'm thankful for him and happy birthday and. Yeah, and thank you for everybody, everybody does up here and I really appreciate everything.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, Mayor, so first, um, the reason why I voted no on extending the meeting was trying to keep us on a tight crunch, cause I knew the last thing was council reports, so I knew that'll hold us accountable. Secondly, um, if, if council, if Councilman Hammer wasn't gonna say anything, um, I was gonna suggest. You know, as I reflect and I look at this makeup of this council, I see subtle signs of going down the same. Um, trail that I went down in regards to being burnt out. Spending twenty hours at, you know, City Hall, trying to figure this out, trying to understand that, same thing that burnt out Councilman Bailey. Um, and I was faced it as well, so I would just wanna encourage council, you know. To the point of Mary and Martha, the message I got from it is don't get so busy for God that you forget God. So with that, make sure y'all aren't burning yourselves out too much. And we have staff that's here nine to five, like some of these things, Councilman Hammer, we can just give them direction, like. You know, we have, we gave the directions just now from Councilman Landman regarding the fifty million dollar bond, we can give the same direction. Regarding, you know, the infrastructure advisory board and the sustainability board towards our directors, I believe. We as council, you know, govern the board per se, but we give direction to our city manager who then gives direction to staff. So instead of adding more to your plate, maybe we can say, hey, uh, when he walks in on Monday, you know, tell him, hey, congratulations. But this is another thing we would like for him to look into, which is the infrastructure advisory board, how it can be improved, how he can work with utilities regarding the sustainability board. And follow up with us in thirty days, sixty days, however long, and if he doesn't, if they, the subject matter experts don't like what they see. And they come back to us and say, hey, this isn't working, or this isn't gonna work, or we can't put this together. Then I'll be all for, uh, what Deputy Mayor Jaffe suggested in regards to get rid, uh, getting rid of the board, so. That's all, I love y'all, that's why I'm speaking like that. I face burnout up here, I don't wanna see y'all having the same thing, it affected my family, affected me, I don't wanna see it on y'all, so that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson, Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Um, thank you, thank you, Mayor, I just. Reiterate the rebuttal comment of burnout, if just all the council members participated equally, others wouldn't have to work more. Um. I appoint Pete Filberto to the TPO Citizens Advisory Committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you, so I'll start off by just saying a great report, the very first thing is our city of Palm Bay. I has earned the top spot as the best city in America in the entire nation. For the, for first time home buyers in a twenty twenty five study released by. Uh, personal finance outlet Wallet Hub dot com. The report analyzed three hundred cities across the country, ranking them based on affordability. The real estate market strength and the quality of life. Palm Bay stood out in several key categories, including active home listings. Per capita new building permits and high millennial home ownership rate. According to the study, Palm Bay's residents can also look forward to their homes growing in value. As the city has the third highest home appreciation rate in the country, in the nation. Homes in the city were worth a hundred and eight percent more in twenty twenty three. Uh, than, more than in twenty twenty three. So I, I add, those are positive things that the city and our leadership have, have been working on. So then I wanna turn the, the table a little bit. A war hero has gone to be with the Lord. The young man, and I know you guys have heard me mention Alcadio Santiago Rodriguez, Master Sergeant, United States Army. Silver Star recipient. Uh, to me, I believe he was the smartest infantryman in the history of the United States Army. Now let me tell you why. I'm reading from the actual, which I believe it warrants, he just recently passed, tomorrow is his funeral. On twenty seven April nineteen fifty one, near Hagbuck, Korea, while approaching through a pass. A reinforced enemy battalion was fired on by Third Platoon Company K. Which had taken a blocking position astride the pass. When his squad leader was moodily wounded, Private Santiago Rodriguez voluntarily assumed command of the squad. Receiving orders to withdraw, he organized the squad and led it to a more tenable position. During a later assault to drive the enemy from the ridge, Private Santiago volunteered to carry a wounded comrade. To safety. Suddenly, encountering five enemy soldiers, he placed his wounded comrade on the ground. And opened fire on the enemy. After killing four hostile troops, he captured the fifth. He had the presence of mind to capture the fifth and force him to evacuate his wounded man. To the Battalion A stage, A station, the gallantry and initiative displayed by Private Santiago Rodriguez. Reflect a great, great credit upon. Reflect a great credit, great credit upon himself and the United States Army. I don't know about you. But that to me should have been the Medal of Honor. To have the presence of mind, not to shoot that fifth enemy soldier. And say, now wait a minute, you're gonna carry my buddy so that he could get fixed. So I honor. He retired Master Sergeant after thirty years of service in the United States Army. And he also received a Bronze Star. He also received the Congressional Gold Medal. For being part of the Army's sixty-fifth Infantry Regiment. Anyway, that concludes my report. I will be at that funeral and if any of you wanna pay tribute to this war hero. It will be at Our Lady, or Our Lady of Lords in Melbourne. At, um, one thirty in the afternoon tomorrow. That concludes my report. Mr. Morton, any additional reports?
Yeah, real, real briefly, I'll, I'll, I'll cut most of it out. I don't think I'll start filing written reports because it always feels like I'm a little rushed to communicate. But I, I did wanna communicate one thing so the public can, can know and it was actually suggested to me by Ms. Connolly that I communicate this. Cause usually I don't communicate these kinds of things, but she was surprised to know what initiatives I'm doing to be transparent and engaged and accessible to the public. So on that note, of course, we got the coffee with the city manager starting. We do a monthly lunch and learn, which kicked off, where we invite a community member in once a month to meet with our executive team and staff. I think this time we had about thirty-eight people meet with someone and we learned from them, we listened, we engaged, we, we tried to understand. We've done two open houses already. We did one on Turkey Creek. We did one on the Santa Filippo road closure. We have more coming. Um, we're gonna start doing an annual, every six months, do a utilities open house, communicate, engage, share projects, show what we're doing. And then the other six months, do a public works open house. So it's just strategies to keep our community informed and engaged. We've, we've begun hitting the HOA circuit. I'm on several HOA meetings and meeting invites. I'm meeting with two to three citizens a week. Uh, that, that can get ahold of me. That's, it's hard to do more than that. So I met with three different individuals this week, meeting with several more next week. Um, and so, you know, just in terms of, of that, we're working with a strategy consultant. Um, who, who's giving us some time to reevaluate our social media, make sure we're consistent, coherent, clear, reaching audiences. And then we're also investigating the use of A I in some of our communications. So, um, he suggested I share that, just so the public knows we're trying. We're trying to be, as a city leadership team, more, more accessible and engage, engage with the community. And I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Madam Attorney?
Nothing further.
Okay, this concludes our meeting.